The Town of Burlington will be holding the July 20th, 2023 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Code 30A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance is being provided as a courtesy, the meeting will not be suspended if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item should, on this agenda, should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For those of you seeking to attend remotely, you may do so via the following: townofberlingtonwebx.com. Our meeting number is (233) 500-50879. You can join by phone at (1617) 315-0704. We're being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon 41. We're also streamed on the BCAT Government Facebook page via Facebook Live.
Thank you, Liz. Item A is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Articles 13, signed regulations submitted by the Select Board.
So we received an email from Paul Sagarino, our Town Administrator, stating that they are looking to withdraw this item from the warrant. They submitted it, and they're not ready to take it on. It's about the digital sign for the town common that's supposed to replace the what's currently there, which is kind of like a banner sign thing. So I don't think they're ready to take that on at this point, so they're asking for continuance.
Great. May I have a motion, please?
Looking to withdraw or continue it?
You're looking to withdraw, so the motion's in, or, yeah.
Okay.
Withdraw from our agenda.
Our agenda, okay. I'll make the motion. Madam Chair, the Planning Board, Land Use Committee, and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee hereby accept the petitioner's request to withdraw the amendment, the zoning bylaws, Article 13, signed regulations, as requested by a Town Administrator in an email dated July 18, 2023.
Second.
What is the favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
No, out of post. In favor, sorry.
Item B is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article 15, Use Regulations to Address Defiused Uses pertaining to Automobile Dealerships uses submitted by the Herb Chambers 93 Cambridge Street LLC. Who's here on behalf of this item?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and those watching at home. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with the law firm of Reiman Bronstein here tonight, representing the Herb Chambers Companies in connection with the warrant article that we've submitted. Chris Barages, who's a professional registered engineer as part of our team, sitting with me here. And also have John Welch, who is Director of Construction and Facilities for the Herb Chambers Company here as well. I think we have a couple of folks that are participating remotely, too. I believe our architect, Scott Lasek, and also our landscape architect, Chris Jones, part of our team, I believe. So we weren't trying to necessarily have a site plan hearing on this, but inevitably I know some questions might come up that we thought would be helpful to be able to answer. So I have a few hard copies of this. I could, one, two, three. There you go. But we had a brief presentation here that we wanted to walk through that might be helpful, but in short, we have submitted a warrant article for the September town meeting that would allow for the existing Kia dealership that's located at 93 Cambridge Street in Burlington, the opportunity to upgrade, modernize, and expand that dealership by providing an addition to that building that would be located to the right of the existing dealership. So we had a few slides that we would like to just kind of walk through with you to give you an understanding of what's going on. So you're probably all familiar with the property. We have some photos that we're going to show you in a moment, but this is going to be a long overdue renovation and expansion to that property at 93 Cambridge Street. For those of you that have been in town for some time, you'll probably remember that the same dealership building was built back in 1970 and operated by Passon Weis. They had a Porsche Audi dealership at that location for many, many years. Herb Chambers had acquired the property back in the 2000s, I believe, at which time, obviously, the Porsche and the Audi were relocated to where they are today, the former CN Wood dealership site. And Herb has operated a Kia franchise at that property. So our goals are really to provide a significant aesthetic enhancement to the area. You'll see some photos in a moment that show the existing conditions. And also to make some meaningful improvements to the overall customer experience in terms of it not being an adequate facility to really be responsive to customer demands, service time waits, and so on and so forth. So we go to the next slide, Caleb. We've submitted a zoning bylaw text amendment that will allow for this property, which it's in the BG zoning district, so it's a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use. I think as board members know, auto dealership is not allowed in the general business zoning district. At the time that it was built, back in 1970, evidently it was, and the bylaws have changed, so it's pre-existing. We've proposed a zoning bylaw amendment which would delineate a new use category for existing automobile dealerships in the general business district, allowing expansion capabilities under very limited conditions through a planning board special permit process. And if this approach is approved by Town Meeting in September, which we obviously hope it would be, we would need to come back and have a fully vetted site design special permit process with the Planning Board, similar to what we did with Porsche. So speaking of Porsche, just the last bullet here is that this same type of zoning bylaw amendment was adopted by Town Meeting in 2018, which enabled the construction of the Porsche building, which used to be one building with Porsche and Audi. So just the next slide is the actual text itself, which I'd be happy to read, but basically it's to allow by special permit in the general business district automobile dealership, including redevelopment and our expansion of existing facilities only, which may include integrated structured parking, notwithstanding any structured parking limitations or restrictions elsewhere in the zoning bylaw, provided that said automobile dealership use is in existence and is engaged in the sale of new motor vehicles as of the date of the adoption of this subsection, 42511. Significance of that being that this would be the only dealership in the BG zone that actually engages in the sale of new vehicles. Any redevelopment or expansion may extend onto abutting BG zone lots, provided, however, that the building footprint for said automobile dealership may not exceed 20,000 square feet in size. So we put that in there to really set a governor, if you would, in terms of making sure that a building can't exceed a certain footprint to address any concerns that this could allow for further creeping of a dealership onto other properties. So we did have a meeting last week with the zoning bylaw review committee. I know Sherri Ellis, the chair, is here, and, you know, one comment that came up there, and we're fine making that clarification, is just to make it clear that that 20,000 square feet is total building area, inclusive of any accessory structure or anything else, so we're fine making that clarification. And then lastly, said lots comprising the existing and proposed dealership uses shall be deemed one lot for density regulation and parking purpose, which is consistent with how it's been approached otherwise. So the next slide is just showing how, this is from your existing zoning bylaws. You'll see Sections 4259 and 42510, which are similar text amendments that had been adopted by Town Meeting previously. Really, the point here is that this has been the method that has been used to allow for this type of use. I should probably say that the reason for doing it this way is that the only zoning district in town that allows for auto dealership use is the BT zoning district. There's only two of those in town. I believe it's where Speedway is and where Midas Muffler is, down on Middlesex Turnpike. So I think the reason for that is that it's also the district that allows for gas stations, car washes, auto repair, and also happens to be the town's adult entertainment district. So we did not want to rezone the property to BT, and we wanted to go about it in this way, similar to how 4259 was done, which, as I understand, was done for Burlington Dodge many, many years ago, when Burlington Dodge existed, to allow for parking on an adjacent lot. And then obviously 42510, which was done back in 2017 timeframe, I believe, when the, for Porsche, to allow for a dealership on a budding lot. So, next slide. Again, I know you don't look at these bylaw amendments in a vacuum, so I did think it would be, thought it would be helpful for you to better understand the properties we're talking about, but obviously you can see 93 Cambridge Street, which is the Kia dealership property right there, that Caleb is so generously outlining with his mouse there, but that is the existing dealership property. To the right of it is 95 Cambridge, which I still call the Quick Copy Building, because Quick Copy occupied that building at one point in time. And then to the right of that is the build, property that's occupied, the building is Waltham Pest, just as a point of reference, there are tenants that's in that building. But you can probably see from these photos that it's a wide open expanse of curb cut. You know, it's wide open pavement in front of 97 and 95, no landscaping that's out there, no sidewalks or anything like that, and no connectivity between the properties that allows for some improvements that we're envisioning here. So if you could just go to the next slide, I think it's just some additional photos, kind of drilling in, zooming in a little bit on the respective properties, but again, the dealership being 93 Cambridge Street, 95 in the middle, and then to the right, 97. And again, you can see that wide open curb cut and no landscaping, and not the most safe type of operation there. So, and again, this is just throwing, showing all three of those together, which I thought would be helpful to see. Again, showing the kind of, aesthetically, I think there could certainly be some upgrades here in terms of how it appears today. So the, I want to just briefly touch upon this, but I mentioned at the beginning, but, you know, one of the issues and the rationale for this is that there's not a lot of service capability for existing Kia customers within the existing building. This is going to allow for additional service, so that wait times for customers aren't as difficult as they are now. The existing Kia building is a little bit funky in that you actually, to get to the service bay, it's on the second floor of the Kia building. You have to drive around to the back and enter on the second floor of that building. So it's not a very efficient operation and not a very efficient use of the overall space as well. So what we're able to do with this is provide a much more modern dealership experience for customers, which I think will obviously benefit the town as a whole as well in terms of the appearance of the facility. So the next slide, again, we thought it might be helpful just to give you an understanding of how the building would be laid out. The existing building is to the left, that would remain. The addition would be built to the right of it. You can see that angled feature there, Caleb, if you could, you know, with a building angles like right here. This is where the existing building, yeah, exactly, yeah, that's where the existing building ends there. So everything to the right of that would be an addition. And I think you can also appreciate from this slide as well, the significant upgrades that would be made to the street front appearance in terms of the additional landscaping that's along there. We're channelizing the curb cuts in a more conventional, acceptable manner by having two traditional curb cuts. And in addition, there'd be landscaping enhancements to the rear of the building as well, to respect our neighbors in the back and along the side of the property as well. So I think this helps to really drill down on that. We do have a rendering as well of the building, which I wanted to share with you. This is just some imaging, again, conceptual in nature, but really helps to drive home the fact that there would be a lot of additional plantings that would be put in along Cambridge Street. I know working with Chris Jones and his team, they want to make sure that these are, you know, lower level plantings that aren't going to interfere with site distance and the like, but certainly going to make a significant upgrade to the overall street front appearance of the property.
I mean, I think this is a great concept. I think right now that we're looking at amending zoning bylaw.
I know, I know.
So I don't want to get too deep in that, because you know
Right.
very well that we're going to look at that site plan
Understood.
in intricate detail. You know, as you note, that we only have four members here, so we can't necessarily be voting on any of these things, that we're going to be continuing
Right.
a lot of, you know, these zoning bylaw petitions. So does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to make at this time, because I think that we're going to be talking about this quite intently.
Just one clarifying quick question, and that is, will the rear property line of the Kia dealership, or does it now directly about the residential property? Or is there some commercial property between the two?
Our site does directly about residential property in the rear.
Your existing?
The existing site.
Of the?
There is a large site, though, to the, that top right corner, that paved area, yeah, right there, that, that's actually not owned by us, that's separately owned, that paved area.
Liz, is there, by expanding or by purchasing and expanding this specific area, is the nature of their business going to affect the neighbors or the abutting neighbors differently than it does now? That's a question I'd want to know. And then, you know, furthermore, have those neighbors been notified of this potential change? I mean, I know that they're not, they don't have to be notified?
No, they have been notified.
They do, they have been.
We have made outreach to them initially before even filing the warrant article. I know that we sent written communication out from the Kia dealership and for the actual zoning bylaw hearing tonight that was sent out as well, so.
Don't take this the wrong way, but was it sent in a Kia envelope, where they think they're getting like a $99, like, rotation special or something? Or do they, do they know it's actually something about a zoning bylaw? I mean, do they know? Have you had many contact? Has anyone actually spoken to an abutting neighbor? Because if I, if I didn't own, I do own a Kia, by the way. If I didn't own a Kia and I got a letter from a Kia dealership, I'd probably just toss it, because I would think it was them trying to sell me something, or recall, or, you know. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, I know that the most recent mailing for abutters was not on Kia letterhead, it was on the town's return mailing address, so, yeah.
Right, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments they would like to make, because I know that, again, we're going to go through this in intricate detail when the rest of the members are present.
I just have, thank you, ma'am, just one, just to kind of get, we started on this. The current building square footage, do you have that handy?
Yes, for the record, Chris Barages, civil engineer. The existing footprint of the existing Kia dealership is 6,000 square feet.
6,000, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are we comfortable making a motion, moving on, or is?
There are a few members online
Oh, I'm sorry.
who have raised their hands, so I don't know if you want to, if I should go and order it on my screen?
If you would, please.
Okay, I'm going to unmute.
If you'd please identify yourself, and if you're a part of a board, or your property address.
And you should get a notification on the middle of your screen asking you to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Zee Y. I'm a company member of Bronson Park, and also a member of the Land Use Committee. I have a question, I actually have a couple of questions. So how many cars do you store now at the site? And how many more will we add, or how many more parking space will we add? And then my second question is, you were talking about there will be more additional landscaping in the back, so that means you're going to cut out like some wooded area with some trees, and that replaced with like shrubs, or like, what's your plan on that? And then my last question will be, well, the, it looks like it's already downsized, would that increase the traffic in the area, especially with more like a large, like, car carriers turning around and going in and out? That will be my question. Thank you.
May I just try to touch upon those? And Chris, I'll have you jump in, but on the landscape, but just as it relates to surface parking, there would actually be less overall surface parking as a result of this project than what exists out there today. What I didn't touch upon, and again, I know, not a site plan hearing, but we're actually talking about having parking incorporated within the building that would enter in at the lower grade, so similar to what the Porsche building has, if you've ever seen the Porsche building, but there's parking actually that's integrated below the building, and we would be doing that here as well. So there would be less overall surface parking spaces in total from these three properties than what exists today, which allows us to make some significant stormwater enhancements and improvements to stormwater quality as well. So just one point that I wanted to, Madam Chair, you'd mentioned acquiring, so these properties were all acquired together when the site was purchased from Passon Weis, so Passon Weis had owned all three properties, and they were all acquired by Herb Chambers. So it's not as if he's went out separately or, you know, since then and purchased them, but.
And I understand that, but, you know, as it currently sits right now, Kia is one, and, you know, Kia is one business, and then there's other businesses, you know,
Yep, oh, absolutely, right, right.
that are connected, you know, their own separate entities. So, you know, the nature of the business is going to change, the activity is going to change, obviously the site plan is going to change.
Right.
So, Steph, one other question. When we continue, will zoning bylaw and land use be continuing with us? Will they be joining us at the next meeting?
I don't think it will, usually, usually, it, we kind of
Obviously, they're more than welcome to come to anybody.
Usually, we don't do a joint, another joint meeting.
Okay.
It's really hard to coordinate everybody, but they're always welcome, and I know that this public hearing, I'm sure that if any of them had any questions, they're always more than welcome to.
May I just quickly address her other points?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, and on traffic, our expectation actually is that this would, now, the existing two buildings, 95 and 97, are, the properties to the right are partially occupied, and, you know, one is vacant right now, so, but if those were occupied for office or retail purposes, which is allowed under the BG zoning, our expectation is that would actually generate more traffic than what the expanded dealership would generate. But we can drill down on those numbers, but, you know, and it would be a much safer operation, too, because of the fact that, you know, right now, you've got wide open curb cuts there, and, you know, they're not optimally designed, but, and Chris, do you want to just maybe touch upon the landscaping in the rear?
Sure, so if you take a look at the addition, and you can see that behind the addition is a driveway and some additional parking spaces. If you go, Caleb, behind with your mouse, behind the building there. Now, behind there is a, is an area that's wooded in the existing condition, and the site has a downhill grade from the south, where the existing Kia dealership is, across 95 and across 97, to the north. It drops down pretty good, and in order to level the site a little bit more and not have it be too, as steep as it is today, with retaining walls between the properties, we need to raise the grade a little bit in the back. And in order to do that, we're going to have to temp, remove some of the existing vegetation at the back of that driveway and parking. And then, once we're done doing that grading activity, working with landscape architect Chris Jones, we're going to come up with a combination of trees and shrubs to replace what was removed. And you can see the proposed idea for landscaping, the staggered trees and the staggered shrubs between our property and the, and really, the only two residential abutters that have homes behind the new work would be Number 18 and Number 20 Arlington Road. And the distance, just to give you an idea, the green that you see on the screen is existing wooded areas. The distance between those homes and our proposed activities, for Number 18, it's approximately 131 feet away from that home. And then for the property next door, Number 20, which, which houses a little bit further away, there's a deck behind that existing home, and that deck is about 150 feet from our proposed activity through a good chunk of woods. And so we propose to replace with heavy trees and shrubs behind that driveway and parking.
Again, we're going back to the site plan, and I know that, you know, we're, again, we're going to talk about that, you know, I think that knowing that, you know, we're obviously going to want to have conservation, chime in drainage issues, chime in things of that nature, which is obviously a lot more that we need to get into at this point in time. Was there somebody else online that had a question or comment?
Just unmuted Alex, if you could.
Hi, Juan, so my name is Al Truck Theater, Town Meeting Member, PC5. So I noticed that the zoning bylaws are generally against having automotive retail services in the general business departments. Can you explain a little more about what, why, why they're written that way, and how the Kia dealership plan is going to mitigate those concerns that put that general question in first place?
I can take that on a little bit, so.
Please.
So just from a historical perspective, the Planning Board, you know, history has been generally that automotive uses are not a desired use in town, they add to traffic, they're not, you know, pleasant to look at, they're more kind of industrial in nature. And so the planning, the zoning bylaw has been written to kind of reduce the amount of these uses in town. I think about, you know, back in the day, nobody wanted drive-throughs and, you know, just added traffic. And so they're still that way today, which is why automotive uses, if you want to do an automotive use by right, it needs to be in the BT zoning district. And so I think the only way for this dealership to expand would to be, to do something like this. So what was the second, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question?
I guess I would grant this by these emissions to the Kia dealership in the future and mitigate those concerns that you just mentioned.
I think that that's something that Town Meeting is going to have to determine, and through this process, I think we're kind of, we're kind of working through those things. And, you know, I think Zee talked about some of them, and we're going to, we're going to talk about them more in the future. This isn't just the first meeting that we're having this item on, it's not the last. So I think that we can dig into the details a little bit more at subsequent meetings. And I think, yeah, and I don't know, Mark, if you have any comments about kind of what I said, or?
No, I mean, I just think anecdotally, it might be important for everyone to know that, you know, every auto dealership in town is located in a zone that actually doesn't allow auto dealer, with the exception of Mercedes, which was done by way of the PDD process. But, and I think every gas station in town, other than Speedway, is in a zoning district that doesn't today allow for gas, so, but yet again, everyone needs to get gas and buy a car or have a car serviced on occasion. So we're trying to do this in a very deliberative manner that is protective of the town's interests in that we, by doing, by way of a text amendment, instead of rezoning the property to that BT district, it only allows what we're proposing to do and doesn't allow for, if we rezone this to BT, you could see a car wash, you could see gas station, you could see all those other things that, you know, I think the town would probably not want to see. So I don't know if that's, that's helpful or not, but.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at the board that has any questions at this time? Again, we're going to be revisiting this next meeting. Is there anyone else online that has any questions? I want to be cognizant, Sherri Ellis, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee, is here. Sherri, do you have anything you'd like to add at this meeting? Is there anyone from the land use, or anyone else additionally that would like to add to this meeting, or, you know, whether or not we can table it till next? May I have a motion, please?
Sure.
Motion to continue this matter.
August 3rd.
August 3rd.
Online, that one?
Yep.
Okay. Get out a second.
Second.
What's the favor?
Aye.
Post. Stay in, 4-0. Thank you.
Great, thanks. You know what, is there a time that's been set for that?
It's going to be a regular time, so 6:30 will be in the next meeting.
Thank you all, appreciate your time, thanks.
It's remote only, just.
Item C is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article 4, Use Regulations to Clarify and Clean Up Numbering in the Use Table submitted by the Planning Board. We will just, do you want to talk about this now, or?
Yeah, I mean, it's so quick. So this is the zoning, the print, the regu, the use table. As you can see right now, solar As you can see right now, solar and generation or storage of hazardous waste are both 4-2-7-11. And they should not be the same number because they are totally different uses. So I am bringing this to Town Meeting to change that so that it would be 4-2-7-11 will be solar, 4-2-7-12 will be generation or storage of hazardous waste for a very small quantity generator, and 4-2-7-13 would be greater than a very small quantity generator. And so, that's all on this, I think it's just kind of cleanup.
Pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
Nope.
Motion, please.
Madam Chair, motion made to continue this matter, Planning Board meeting of August 3, 2023. Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
For post, 4-0.
I don't see, as a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article 2, Definitions of Article 7, General Parking Requirements and Purpose as they relate to shared parking and transportation demand management, submitted by the planning board.
Liz? Sure. So in my quest to do what I can regarding what I feel like we have in our power to do regarding parking and traffic and the abilities we have to help mitigate that, I have put forth this amendment to kind of more solidify the requirements for allowing shared parking amongst the uses in town and also transportation demand management. So requiring companies that are expanding or have a certain number of employees or are going to be creating a certain number of new trip generation have to provide us with a transportation demand management plan. And every year, they're going to have to submit documentation about how they're adhering to it and what they're doing to keep it going. And so, I have definitions related to this, you know, I don't have, I don't have any visuals, it's kind of just like digging in.
Did you send this out to all of us, or?
I did send this out to all of you guys.
I did have a chance to.
I do. It went to your Burlington.org.
Okay, I did, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we, so these are all the definitions, we can dig into them, but they're all basic, you know, fixed route transportation, mixed use development, TDM, TMAs, Transportation Demand, Transportation Management Association. Our TMA that we're currently a part of, the town is, is the Middlesex III TMA, and so we're already associated with one. The other thing that I wanted to do, the Section 7.2 is general traffic and parking requirements. I wanted to update the purpose because I think that it's kind of, they're not as solid as I would like to see them, and I think there are some things that we can make it more clear as to why we're doing, why the bylaw is written in such a way. I think, number one, we're here to promote traffic safety by ensuring adequate storage of motor vehicles off-street to prevent creation of surplus parking. I think we're always, it's never been stated, but we're trying to do that, and reduce single occupancy vehicle trips. Advance affixancy of vehicle traffic on Burlington, allow for safe and convenience routes for pedestrians and bicyclists, permit emergency vehicles to reach homes and businesses with a minimum of delay, and produce and mitigate the impacts of development on parking demands, transportation systems, neighborhood livability, public safety, and the environment through the uses of TDM. So, open to comments on all this, these things. Articles, so I've actually broken this up into three sect, four sections. So there's Article A, which is the definitions, Article B is the purpose, and then you'll see Article, Section C is shared parking.
I actually, Caleb, can you hand this out? I should have had this handed out.
I'm sorry, guys. And so, well, let me wait, so we're on page two. I'm on page two, please.
Thank you, Caleb.
Bill and Ernie, did you have a time to review all of this?
Not a lot of time, actually, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ernie, what about you?
Not completely.
So I'm just going to do a quick overview, give you like, get your...
We're going to do this again.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I just want to get you guys to wrap, everybody wrap their heads around it. And so, I'm on to Article, Section C, which is shared parking. So the idea behind this is that to be more explicit about how parking is shared and how we allow for shared parking in town, because right now, there's like one sentence that says, "You can share parking if you're within 200 feet of the parcel," which isn't really, it's like, not as explicit.
Yeah.
So onsite shared parking, so this is going to help us when we have these multi-tenanted buildings. So basically, you need to determine if you have non-competing uses or competing uses, and so that's the first, to determine that. So you can reduce your parking requirements based on analysis of peak demand for non-competing uses, and you can do that for up to 75% of the requirement, requirement. And if you have competing uses, you can reduce the parking requirements by 15%. These numbers are all open to debate. I looked around the state, I looked at specifically Watertown had a really good bylaw on this, and then also Lexington had, I used as kind of my main, I also looked at East Hampton and all over the state. And this was kind of from there, so these numbers are up to, are all up to discussion. For off-site parking, I said that off-site parking should be within 500 feet of the property, only if the, if the off-site lot has excess park spaces. And then the other thing that, you know, we can go through, you guys can go through them all, but basically, off-street parking, the shared parking facility must provide safe, convenient walking between uses and parking and include safe, well-marked pedestrian crossings. So it can't just be like, oh, we're going to put it over there in the back corner. It needs to be a safe way for people to go back and forth. And then, again, the property owner shall be subject to a legally binding agreement. So we need to get an agreement between both property owners that this shared parking agreement, and it's going to, you know, be registered at the Registry of Deeds, and so we have, we're comfortable that that's going to happen.
Do we have a minimum time for that agreement?
It's not in here, but it would, it would be part of a condition, that's the type of thing that we would put into the condition of the site plan.
And then if it, then if it, you know, if something happens and it comes, it's automatic voiding, or?
Yes, it says, it said the last sentence in D is, "The planning board may condition their approval on the continued existence of written and binding shared parking agreement, the failure of which may render the permit null and void and subject to enforcement by the building inspector." So if it changes hands, if the, if it doesn't go with the, I mean, we can talk about this mechanism as well, and how to really tighten that up, but this is what other towns have used. And then, the last section is, Section D, is my transportation demand management section. Basically, kind of, the purpose is to encourage the reduction in single occupancy vehicle trips for commuters. So this is really kind of geared towards commuters and not so much our retail, because retail users don't always go places during, you know, specific timeframes. Like, you know commuters are going between 8 and, 8 and 10, and, you know, 4:30 and 6. So those, so, and those are peak hours, so we're trying to kind of mitigate that peak hour heavy traffic. So the applicability, so the following project shall be required to prepare and implement a transportation demand management program. So this is, I think, what Watertown uses. The numbers, we're, we can talk about them. New construction, any new construction or an addition of 10,000 square feet or more or 10 or more dwelling units in a single structure. So if you have a multifamily building, you can, that has more than 10 units, we can, we can ask that they provide that as well. The other applicable use is any project that requires site plan review or special permit that will generate more than 150 average daily trips or more than 15 peak hour trips above existing conditions. And that's using methodologies from the ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, or the Urban Land Institute or other appropriate source. So those are the mechanisms by which this is triggered, and it's up for debate, right? The exceptions are childcare facilities, which are protected under the Dover Amendment, property owned by the state, and then retail customer trips, because again, this is really focused on commuter trips and not focused on the retail, on the retail sector. So that's, it's really hard to encourage retail, retail patrons to take your bike to go get groceries, you know what I mean? So, we're not going to do that. So building departments enforcing it. So the program shall meet criteria, you need, so each transportation demand management plan needs to include program goals for trip reduction based on new trips and baseline transportation impacts, provides a list, they need to provide a list of TDM measures that they're going to implement. So things like joining a TMA, so we join Middlesex III, you could also join the 128 Business Council, there are other ones, 128 Business Council is also local, but our town is associated with Middlesex III. Providing employees free passes to use in public transportation, or reduced transit passes, reduced cost transit passes, preferential parking for vehicles other than single occupancy vehicle trips, facilities for cyclists, implementing flex time and staggered work hours. So those are all things that could be included in a TMA plan, or TDM plan, excuse me. We need posed to occupancy monitoring, so that's part of the, they'll be giving us annual reports. And then provide, so if, you know, if their reports come back and it shows that they're not really, that the program isn't working, kind of, what, okay, so what are your corrective measures? What are you going to do next to, what's the next thing? And so, what this will require is that each, each firm or each property owner that, you know, this is applicable to, needs to have a TDM coordinator, and that can either be someone within their own business, or they can hire the Middlesex III to do it for you. And so, they would be responsible for providing us with reporting and kind of be that liaison and be the person who, you know, an employee would go talk to and say, "Hey, I'm sick of sitting in traffic, like, can I get a reduced fare bus pass?" Or, you know, can I, you know, kind of also is in charge of promulgating all the information about alternative options and trying to encourage the use of those. And so, that is it, and I guess open for questions, comments?
I just have one question.
Yes.
Because I really want to dig through this, so I don't want to get too deep.
Yep.
Have we heard from the Chamber of Commerce and what their feelings are in something like this? Because, I mean, we know that we don't want to scare off tenants coming to Burlington by having something along these lines, and then, you know, if it's not enforced, then what are the repercussions? And then now they have to hire somebody else or have a new expense, and again, we're looking at the size of the property that it's going to affect, I would like to think that they'd be able to afford a coordinator or some type of subscription of some sort.
Sure.
But I'd like to hear what the Commerce has to say.
Yeah, I can send it out to the chamber. I know that our economic development director, Melissa, has seen this and she's in support of it. It's not meant to be kind of punitive, it's meant to help everybody, kind of, you know?
You know, and I understand, and I just, you know, but I'm also in the economic development and go to the chamber, and I hear from the tenants and, you know, clients, so...
Do a lot of companies go far, do they, in these other towns that are doing it?
So we already have, so within our current bylaw, there are, there are kind of requirements really encouraging TDM and requiring some TDM. This is kind of, again, with the shared parking, really spelling it out, I feel like our current bylaw doesn't really spell it out.
Right.
And this kind of sets real parameters that, you know, somebody who is looking at our bylaws, looking to permit, will know, okay, this is what I need to do. So that's kind of, it's not necessarily new, I will definitely reach out to Rick and the chamber, absolutely.
But I'd like to hear his comments on how this is written and see what he has to say.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, I will, yeah, absolutely.
Does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? I'll go down the line.
You want me to start?
Sure.
Thank you. Just, nothing specific to this, but from a timing standpoint, when does this have to be finalized for September Town Meeting?
So, so this has to be submitted, let me look, so it's, it's tight for September. I'm not going to lie, I'm not going to lie to you, Bill. And I'm sharing, so I can't get my calendar.
That's okay.
I think that we need to have it done, so we need to have a vote by, I think, our next meeting almost, and then, so our next meeting is the 3rd, and then, anything after that, any changes after that, we would probably submit as updates to the backup, which we've done in the past. And then, that deadline is after the first meeting in September. So I'm considering, because, because the summer is like so hard, that's kind of how I'm considering our like, deadline, 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 to get in any super duper changes so that it will all go out to Town Meeting members and the backup will have the real deal, any, any changes, so.
Yeah, thanks. This is just a lot, lot of good work, I would say, and, yeah, with just, you know, with your benchmarking of other towns, I think that's absolutely the way to go. So thanks. Just take a little bit more time to take a look at it, but thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
This is update, this also has already been reviewed by Town Council.
Great.
So she's already looked at this, she thinks, you know, it's, it's good to go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two basically comments. Number one, we, you know, I'm thinking, wow, was our zoning bylaw really that broke? And it really, it kind of wasn't, and I think Liz would agree, we always had transportation demand management in there, but we basically used it for large projects, like I can think of the Oracle expansion and whatever and things like that. And it didn't have too many, it didn't really have any teeth in it. It really, it said transportation demand management must be practiced, basically. It didn't say step by step what you should do, which I think this makes sense, and I'll give you a real quick example. Oracle Garage, remember asking whoever was the presenter in front of us, "Do you intend to provide a van, you know, so that you can have multiple people if they're coming from the same spot?" Yes, we're going to do that. How about a guaranteed ride home? Will you do that? Because that is usually the biggest prohibitive thing, because people with kids, they were, you know, if I take the van to work, how the hell do I get home if, if my child has a problem? And it's, nah, we're not going to do that. Really, why? Well, we're just not going to do it. And, you know, so this would spell it out a little more. And, okay, and the other thing was shared parking. What we were doing before with our bylaw, and correct me if I'm wrong, is allowing it. Now I think we're encouraging it.
Yeah, and the other...
And that's better.
And the other thing is, there was nothing in the bylaw stating that we needed to have a legal agreement. It was always one of those things that we would, we would condition in our permits. But I think that having things be clear, I think, is helpful for us and really helpful for developers as well.
So the whole thing makes sense, is what I'm, I guess...
I agree. I guess, and Liz, you and I just spoke about this earlier today, so if there's a situation where there's a church, where they have, I mean, they're sharing parking, but it's not conducive to the business, I mean, we're, I mean, we're...
I'm talking about, I know what you're talking, I know what you mean, yes. And we can talk about, yeah.
We're going to have to figure out how that works into things.
Yes, yep.
I don't want to call anyone out.
No.
Okay. We have, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just asked her that one question, that was good.
We have a couple folks online, which you'd like to call?
Yes, I saw Z's, hand up first, I'm going to unmute you again.
I hear you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz, and I really like your presentation. I have a couple of questions again. First, does this have anything to do with the state energy reduction plan and our mall redesign?
No, but I could see how something like this might... Benefit both of those, might benefit both of those things. Thanks for bringing those up. I don't really know that much about the state energy reduction plan, I'd like to learn more about it and see, you know, talking to other, I know that I'm sure our facilities, people are looking at all of that stuff, but good to know about, thank you, yes.
That's great. Yeah, thank you. And next one is the TDM program, is it for business and company and also residential?
So it's intended... For commuters. So it's intended for commuters who are kind of clogging up the roads at peak hours, so peak hours in the morning and peak hours at night. And if they have to come in during those hours to kind of look at alternative modes of transportation to get single occupancy vehicles off the road. So it's really geared towards commuters. I think Watertown looks at it also for, for multifamily housing, so that's where that phrase is, where, you know, if you have a building that has 10 or more units, you know, provide us with, basically provide us with traffic counts and traffic report, and so show us how you're going to manage peak demand there, because that... And so show us how you're going to manage peak demand there, because people also leave their houses a certain time, right? So that, that adds to traffic. And I just think about it, I feel like it makes sense based on the experience we had when we were looking at the Rogers Piano Site, and they were looking to put in a multifamily building over there, and a lot of people were concerned specifically about, you know, the traffic that would be involved there. And so I feel like having this in our bylaw would help mitigate that, so that people could be able to be more comfortable with maybe, you know, or have, you know, make multifamily buildings. If you're adding more people to the town, have them also be responsible for providing alternative options and kind of staggering traffic.
Yeah, that, that sounds good.
And, but then, that means like the residential, they should have like a coordinator to respond, to be responsible, right?
Something that I need to, I need to get into a little bit more. I definitely feel like how that has worked, and I actually want to reach out to the planner in Watertown to find out how that actually is coordinated? Because it does seem, you know, if you have a residential building that doesn't have onsite management, how does that work, right?
About, like I say, the future, like Wimmy Hill Height, and also future, like Lifetime, those kind of buildings, would that count, you know, how that going to work?
And, yeah, again, with condos, exactly, you're right, Zeez. So yes, that is something that I do intend on looking into.
Okay, thanks. And
The one, I think the section B purpose part, 7.2.1, it says purpose. Are you going to delete the current paragraph in the bylaw?
Right now it says
The purpose of this article is to require the minimum amount of parking spaces needed to adequately, you know, that's like one sentence. Do you, are you going to keep that or change it?
So let me look at my backup. I don't remember. Good question. I'll tell you, you don't remember right now, but I'll go back later. I did, I tried to basically incorporate some of
For now.
Yeah, well, I can email you back, Zeez, about that.
Too, too big of a deal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can get the answer for all of us and then email her directly, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
One last minor thing is that under 7.2.9.4, it says B. That part has a number, 72.17. What the, I'm not sure what that is, I couldn't find it.
Seven point, sorry, say that, 7.2.1?
7.2.9.4. And then, under, oh, let me see. It says B, side program shall meet the criteria specified below. Yeah, there. Oh, now you changed it, okay. The copy I got is like a 72.17. No, that's okay, let me copy yours. 7.2.9.48, that's great. I'm all set, thank you so much, Liz.
Okay, thanks, Zeez.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes, she's been unmuted, or request for unmute, should show up on her screen, yep.
My question. I want to get back to that coordinator, coordinator position that those of you have in here. And I've mentioned this to you before, but I'd like to mention it to the planning board, is I really don't think it's appropriate for us to specify that an organization needs to have, to hire a person in the role of a coordinator in order to do a report. I think it's good for us to say that, that a report would be required annually, if that's the frequency of these organizations, and for the planning board to specify what the report should entail. But I don't think it's our job to tell companies what kind of people they need to be hiring and what role. It may be that this actually is going to be a small part of some, of a job that somebody has. So they may take on this role, but not this as their position. And I, I really don't feel that that wording belongs in here at all. So that's my two cents. And, and I think the other thing is, when you're, if you're going to apply this to residential, it really doesn't work to have a coordinator person in a condo situation or apartments. So.
Thank you. Yes, so just in response, so Betsy, I did appear at the ZBRC last week?
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday? Okay, I did. And Betsy did bring this up, and the intent, so TDM coordinator is, is the term used in TDM for, you know, it's, it's a, it's a term, I don't want to say, I don't know how to say, in the business, but like, in the world of TDM, it's, it's what is, is known as, the TDM coordinator? And it usually isn't somebody that we require a company hires? It's, it's usually, you know, who are you going to designate this role to? Who does somebody go to? You know, you're promising all of these things, you're providing us with the plan of what you're going to do, and you're promising all of these things. Who is the person that you are designating in your, in your organization that is going to be the one to administer this program? So if you're giving, if you're giving us a plan of what you're going to do, who's actually administering it? And how do we know you're administering it? Okay, we're going to require reporting.
So maybe, I mean, to Betsy's point, reading this, it's like, oh, I have to get a body, I have to get a coordinator? So maybe we change the word, the wording to say, is there responsible for the cost for providing a responsible, a responsible party to administer such plan?
Perfect.
Okay. The other thing, again, to Betsy's point, both great points, Betsy, thank you. Can we see a sample report or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, offering the information, because somebody who's coming into Burlington or, you know, that's going to do this TDM process,
Yeah.
they're not necessarily going to know.
Yep.
And so if it's somebody who is, you know, maybe an HR person or an admin or, you know, whoever it is, to have them go through and then say, oh, well, I didn't give you the information because I didn't know, if we had a form or something, you know, the information that they need, I think that that would be helpful as well.
And building off of that, so one of the reasons why I think that it's easy, so one of the things that's hard about doing this, and why I feel like our last attempt at TDM was difficult, is because it's hard to administer it from a town perspective.
Sure.
But now we have an online permitting system. So could we have, so the system allows for us to have a form where each year, you know, with business licenses, Amy does this with, our town clerk does this with business license. Every year you resubmit a form and it's, it's kind of an automatic thing. And you get an email in your inbox stating, oh, you have to resubmit this report, you know? So it kind of can be more automated. So I think that's also one of the benefits of what we have now versus what they had in the past. So that's kind of, would be something that I think would be helpful for us to do.
Sure. So, yeah, so if we can get a copy of like whatever that form is that they fill out, I think that would be helpful, I think, I mean, it would be helpful for me, I'm sure it would be helpful for the board as well.
It might be interesting, and I'm sure you can find out, how, how much does it cost to join the TDM?
That is something I need to ask.
Because if we're requiring 10,000 square feet or how many employees, I forget.
Well, it's not even employees, it's based on trip generation, it's based upon how much, how much trip, how many, so if you can demonstrate that you're not creating a certain number of trips, then you don't need to adhere to this.
Okay.
Right, but I mean, if you're saying you're not, if you're going to demonstrate, how are they demonstrating? Because, I mean,
They have to show us
If I wasn't, if I wasn't an honest person, well, I could say, oh, you know, I'm, I'm not
Right, you'd have to, you need to hire a transportation engineer, and you have to use specific metrics using kind of standardized, standardized trip.
Because if it's only $10 a month or something, or some crazy thing, then you just owe the money and
No, I'm with you all day long, I'm just asking the questions.
Yep, no, it's great.
Ms. Hughes is, do you still have your hand up, or did you put your hand up again?
Sure, higher hand, another request unmuted has been sent.
Yeah, thank you. No, I have something else. Just a kind of follow up. Is, you're going to get all these reports sent in to the town. So my question is, who's going to review all these plans? Because you're going to have all these reports coming in, and we've got a lot of companies. So are we, by doing this, are we actually setting ourselves up for either having to hire more people? And if so, is that, is the cost of that really something we want to be doing? And, and is that person, you know, reviewing it now, all of a sudden, no, this form isn't completed, right? So then they got to get back to the people and tell them they need to do it? So are we just creating a bureaucracy here that is not going to really get us much? So that's question number one. And you mentioned hiring a transportation engineer? So I just, I worry about, it's, it's very nice in a perfect world and maybe in a big city, I just worry about all of this kind of added stuff that we may be putting on companies coming into town, especially smaller organizations that are coming into town. So that's my comment.
Thank you, I think that's
I asked this to go to the Chamber, because I really want some, some feedback from them.
So this isn't something that I haven't thought about. If I didn't think there was adequate capacity in our department to do this, I wouldn't have put it into the warrant. I don't think that it's going to be a crazy addition. Again, all the companies that are existing now are, they aren't going to have to adhere to this, this is for new companies coming in, new additions. So this isn't something that all of a sudden every year I'm going to be getting, you know, I'm going to have to do 1,000 new of these. It's going to be on a case by case basis. When we see larger projects coming in and they are permitted, you need to meet these steps, you need to meet these, these things. You need to demonstrate this. And we already require companies who are coming in, this is mostly for site plans, if you're coming in for a site plan.
So the older people, the grandfather?
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, no, I didn't realize.
Yeah, 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 so I mean, you know, we, we can't say, oh, you know, Oracle, like, you need to come back and do this. So this is going to, it's not immediate, it's not going to be everybody all at once, it's work, it's going to build upon itself. And again, again, all the numbers in here are open to debate and discussion. I mean, the whole point of this, for me, is to, this is, you know, we have control over our bylaw, and one of the things I hear all the time about is traffic and, and how can we reduce traffic? Commutes are terrible, 128 is a parking lot, what do we do? And I, you know, that was, that's my intent in bringing this forward. So, you know, I felt like it's in my power, why don't we try it out? Throw it to the wall, see if it sticks. Got it.
Betsy, you back with us?
Yeah, I just, I just, Liz, I hear what you're saying, but, I mean, you guys are understaffed at the moment, and I, I just, I do worry about this. If we're going to say it's only for larger projects, which is what you just said, then I think this probably needs to be revised pretty dramatically, just to specify, you know, how big is large? And where are the pain points coming from in terms of the traffic? I mean, a lot of the traffic that people are upset about are people cutting through Burlington to get to other places, so, and maybe not even from Burlington to Burlington. So I just, I worry about this, and I don't know that September, you're going to have enough time to really vet this the way it needs to be vetted and still hit September. I applaud what you're trying to do, I just, this is a no good deed goes unpunished kind of thing, and I just worry about that. Thank you, and now I'm going to be quiet.
Okay, I think that, I haven't read through this.
We have a lot of open questions, we need to contact some people, I think, can we table this for next week?
Sure.
Yes, can I make one more comment?
Of course you can.
So one of the other benefits that I see from, coming from implementing something like this is that it's going to provide us and our department with data. These reports are going to give us data. And so, you know, Betsy said, you know, she thinks that traffic is coming, it's all cut through traffic and that's the issue. Do we know that? Can we quantify that?
I mean, but are these reports going to tell us that?
They must, we can
They're going to give us some, some data, but that's not going to solidify exactly where all these cars are coming from, right?
I think some of them, we can find out kind of des, origin destination points.
Okay.
So it's going to, it's going to help us know where people are coming through and where they're going. So that's the other benefit of this.
Again, I think taking a look at what the information that they're, we're being, we're asking of them, I think is going to stimulate more questions. So if you could circulate those details to us and the comments from Chamber, I think we're going to have a very interesting discussion next, next meeting.
All right, sounds good.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, motion made to continue this planning board meeting of August 3, 2023. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. This concludes the joint meeting of the Planning Board Land Use Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. From here, we'll begin a regularly scheduled planning board meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Sure. Madam Chair, to adjourn the joint meeting of the Planning Board Land Use Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you everyone for joining from board committees, and moving forward, may I have another motion?
Madam Chair, to call the order of the meeting for the planning board. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. We'll begin with items being continued, withdrawn off our agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, may I take item 6B out of order for discussion purposes? Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero. Item B is a discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change, 186 Middlesex Turnpike, Lifetime Fitness, is the applicant. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August 3, 2023, as requested by the applicant's engineer, an email dated July 19, 2023. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take item C out of order for discussion purposes. Second.
All's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Four zero. Item C is a discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change, 26 Beacon Street, Beacon Village Apartments, is the applicant.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August 3, 2023, as requested by the applicant's engineer, an email dated July 19, 2023. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take items 7E through item I, together out of order for discussion purposes.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four zero. Item E is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.4. Laboratories engaged in research, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of chemistry, electronics, engineering, geology, non-biologic medicine and physics of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC, is the applicant. Item F is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.4.1. Life science laboratories engaged in research, prototype manufacture, experimental and testing activities, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life system technologies, environmental and biomedical devices, biosafety level four BL4 laboratories, as defined by the CDC, and prevention are prohibited in Burlington, the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC, is the applicant. Item G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.4.2. Life science laboratories engaged in the manufacture of life science technologies and medicines for commercial production to the market, including but not limited to the fields of pharmaceuticals, biomedical technologies and engineering, life systems technologies, environmental biomedical devices, biosafety level four BL4 laboratories, as defined by the CDC, and prevention, which are prohibited in Burlington, the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry, is the applicant. Item H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.9. Hazardous and toxic materials, chemical use, storage, transport, disposal or discharge of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC, is the applicant. Item I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.7.11. Generation of storage or hazardous waste limited to the volume classified as a very small quantity generator, BSQG of the zoning bylaws, 22 Terry Avenue, AP Terry LLC, is the applicant.
Bill? Okay, sure. Madam Chair, if the planning board hereby accepts the applicant's request to withdraw the application for special permits pursuant to section 4.2.7.4, Laboratories engaged in research, 4.2.7.4.1, Life Science Laboratories engaged in research, 4.2.7.4.2, Life Science Laboratories engaged in the manufacturing of life science technologies, 4.2.7.9 hazardous and toxic materials/chemicals used, and 4.2.7.11, generation or storage of hazardous waste of the zoning bylaw for the property 22 Terry Ave, without prejudice, as requested by the applicant's attorney in a memo dated July 18, 2023. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't want to oppose after reading all that, you know? May I have the announcements, please?
Sure. So our next planning board meeting is August 3 at 6:30. Because it's the summertime and we had to add this extra meeting in, it's going to be all virtual. Great. So what that means is because we have some special permits that we're going to be voting on, I'm going to have to ask you guys to trickle into the office at some point to sign them so that we can process them.
Sure.
This was from Barbara who couldn't be here with us today. There is going to be a sculpt event at the Sculpture Park, the Follow Your Heart Sculpture is going to return to the park on July 22nd at 10:00 AM. I think there's going to be an event. Celebrate Burlington Day is August 5th from 11:00 to 4:00 PM. It's on the Town Common. And the, I know there's been a lot of talk, but the MassDOT resurfacing project of 3A is coming back. There's going to be a mass up public information meeting on the resurfacing on August 8th at 6:30 PM. And email planning@burlington.org if you're interested and we can send out the link. I'm sure that we will be posting on our social media.
In person?
It's online. It's, I'm, I'm almost positive.
It's all virtual.
It's all virtual. Yes.
Great. Do any other members have any announcements? Moving on. Item A is an application for endorsement of a plan believed not to require approval. 3 Benson Way, Garrett J. Litchfield is the applicant.
So I am going to be handling this application. So Tom Murphy is, so, so Tom Murphy is representing. He, you know, so basically if you don't sign this, so let's start at the beginning. This is a, this is an A and R. It's a, I reviewed it. Each lot has 100 feet of frontage on an approved right of way. That is the standard by which we review A and Rs. The plan also denotes that, hold on Caleb. Go back up, go back up, back up, up up.
I just was asking, so the applicant nor his counsel are present this evening?
No.
Okay.
That being said, you can choose to not sign it and not endorse it and it will be constructively approved. Or you can sign and endorse it to, to approve it. So.
So maybe instead of her representing the applicant, we, you know, don't do anything on it. Maybe that's the right way to do that.
I kind of feel the same way.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay. Great. So I'll take an act, a motion to take no action on this item? Motion made?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero.
Thank you guys.
Item A is application for endorsement of a plan not to, believed not to require approval. 180 Cambridge Street Shaw's Supermarkets Inc., Care of Appointments Company Inc. is the applicant. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kevin Capaldo. I am a survey project manager for Allen and Major Associates and prepared the plan before you tonight. So this is at 180 Cambridge Street. This is the Shaw's, one contiguous parcel, and they seek to subdivide out what is shown as Lot 5 on this plan, which would create a separate lot with the intention to be deeded to the Dunkin' Donuts folks. Right now, they have a lease agreement and Shaw's and the franchisee of the Dunkin' Donuts have been in talks and they would like to own the parcel and fee. So they seek your endorsement to create this separate lot shown as Lot 5 on this plan. This has been through the land court review process and the land court engineering division has approved the configuration and everything that you see on this plan.
Great. Liz?
I don't really have any questions. I know that in our discussions, I just wanted to get confirmation about reciprocal access easements. Would the easements be continuing in the same manner?
That, moving forward, none of the easements shown here on would change. If there's anything that needed to change moving forward, nobody from their, they have in-house counsel. None of that has been brought up. They were just more concerned about getting the lot out because this has been a conversation that's been happening. So the Dunkin's gets their parcel that they want. But it's my understanding that they are working together and want to accommodate whatever they need.
Assuming all the reasons remain in place, I don't think I have any questions. Actually, I take that back. Don't quote me on this. Snow removal will be moved off-site. Because, I mean, if they're releasing this, I'm, and I, again, don't quote me on this, but I imagine with the previous owner where they're releasing it, where they're removing snow, they're removing snow on the Shaw's parking lot because they're releasing from Shaw's. So if they're deeding this separate and aside, they're not, is there an agreement for snow or is there a plan? Just because that's a tight space.
Yes.
A pretty frequented space.
Yes. And again, based on the brief conversations that I've had regarding some of these matters, because they've been so focused on the lot configuration itself, not specifically anything else, because that was our responsibility to the boundary itself, not specifically the easements, but from talking with council and with the representative from Shaw's, that will be part of some sort of reciprocal agreement moving forward with respect to parking access, snow. I think it will just be one big document sort of that you see at some of these other larger developments in town.
Can you put something in just the document that this was kind of, I mean, granted it's on record, but is there something that we?
I think that, I mean, I think that the site plan still applies. So this was all done through one big site plan. And I do believe that that still remains in effect. This doesn't negate that.
Okay.
I can double check with counsel.
I would like you to do that. I mean, I, it's not, it's not the end of the world. Like I, you know, I, I think it's, it's logical. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're crossing our Ts.
I would imagine we'd be seeing Dunkin' Donuts pretty soon.
Sorry?
I said, I would imagine we'd be seeing Dunkin' Donuts within a year or so because they are supposed to, from what I understand, their corporate requires them to revamp their facades and whatever. And I think they're way overdue.
Are you familiar with that? Do you know?
No, we, we've had, the only communication I've had is with Shaw's directly because that was who engaged us as a client. So we, we've been, any communication with the Dunkin's folks, we have had none.
I'm guessing. I'm sorry.
I mean, I would imagine so, but you know, again. Okay. I don't have any questions. Anyone else on the board have any questions, comments, concerns?
I might just have a couple.
Sure.
Madam Chair, as I look at this, so the, the single dumpster you have is, that's right at the, the kind of the notch near the walk-in fridge? Is that right?
Yes, to the, what would be the southeasterly corner of the building there?
Yeah, backward one, yeah.
One second.
Yeah, that's, isn't that right at the drive-through in the dumpsters?
Right.
Yeah, as you pull into that drive-through, that would, that dumpster would be on your left.
It's always there. Yeah. I always see it.
Because there was another one in Park in Cabalus, Boston recently, right?
Yeah, I think that's gone.
So that's gone. I think that's about it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Member of the committee?
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm all set. May I have a motion, please?
Okay, want to get any? Madam Chair?
Thank you.
To approve and sign a plan believed not to require approval plan entitled 180 Cambridge Street Burlington, Mass. Prepared by Allen and Major Associates dated July 19th, 2023, reflecting the subdivision of assesses parcel 23-122-0 into Lot 5, 32,697 plus minus square feet. And 23-122-0, 346,755 plus minus square feet. Planning board finds this the proper submission of approval not required. The applicant shall submit two paper copies and electronic PDF of the endorsed approval not required plan to the planning board within four weeks of the approval. Proof of recording with the registered ID shall be divided to the planning department upon completion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, no.
We're all in?
Yep.
All right. Four zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. Yes.
On to administrative matters. Item A is a discussion request for approval of a minor engineering change, 22 Terry Ave, Terry Ave LLC is the applicant.
Can I share my screen?
I just did you.
Perfect. And if you don't mind.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Remember the board, the record, Christine Hung, President of Brumman Bronstein. As you can see, I'm remote tonight, but I do have members from the applicant team from Paradigm Properties, a property owner in person. And that is Kevin McCall and Noah Sparkman. We're here before the board for a minor engineering change. And just by way of background to refresh the board's memory, Paradigm Properties purchased the property back in March 2022. We were before the planning board on some special use permits, which in October 2022, the light manufacturing and research and development were unanimously approved. We had continued earlier tonight. We had continued several other special permits, which we just withdrew tonight. And we'll be back before the board when a tenant is procured if there are special permits that will be needed. As part of the special permit conditions and because the building is a tired building and the site is tired, the applicant wanted to make some exterior aesthetic improvements, although no exterior modifications were being performed, they just wanted to make some exterior enhancements. And in the conditions of the special permit, the applicant agreed to do some landscaping changes, which that landscaping design plan was approved by the board. The applicant also agreed to remove the existing fencing and replace it with a wrought iron style fencing. And that, a type of fencing has been approved by planning staff. Additionally, five exterior lighting structures were, were agreed to be placed by the applicant along Long Street and Terry Ave. And the placement of those lighting fixtures were approved by planning staff as well. Other, other improvements were to create an ADA accessible crosswalk. And the red line plan shows initially a proposed location. The town engineer, Megan Cavalier, had made a recommendation that a mid-block crosswalk was not recommended, but that a crosswalk should be placed at the end of Long Street by the stop sign. So we went back and took a look at that and with our architect and engineers agreed that that, you know, that was a more appropriate location so that we switched the crosswalk to the end of Long Street with a sidewalk similar to that across the street at Northern Business Machine. There are also some exterior painting that's going to be done to the building. And so we have a quick slide presentation. I'll turn it over to Noah Sparkman and he can go into those changes in further detail. And then we'll be, yeah, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thanks, Christine. Madam Chair, members of the board, thanks for the time this evening. I'm Noah Sparkman. I am a VP of Acquisitions and Development of Paradigm Properties. And I've been involved with this property since our purchase. This is one where we're really just here to formalize the conditions of the special permit that was previously approved as we appeared before your team in 2022. That special permit was issued in October of 2022 and we have been in the process of, for moving forward with the, the conditions of that special permit. As of yet, we do not have a tenant in hand and we have not undergone any, any permitting activity on-site. This minor engineering change is really to, again, formalize those conditions and make sure that they're laid out on the site plan in record. So it's a little hard to see, but this plan has been reviewed through the DCM process. As Christine indicated, we had some feedback from the engineering department and they were just looking for us to move the location of the ADA sidewalk, which we, we did as they advised and resubmitted that plan for DCM's review. There were no further comments. To memorialize the other items, as the other conditions of the special permit, we have included them on the redline site plan here. And glad to answer any questions about those items. Just in summary, Christine already mentioned most of these. There were some landscaping changes, including removing and replacing dead landscape elements and the addition of additional foliage. That has all been completed. The fencing changes that Christine indicated are underway. We wanted to formalize the approval of the wrought iron fencing that the planning board has reviewed. Streetlight additions, we needed to formalize the approval of the locations of those streetlights. And that has been reviewed and approved verbally by the, the planning department. The aforementioned Long Street sidewalk addition and crosswalk for ADA purposes. The facade painting, when we, one of the conditions was to paint the area around the loading dock. But I'll show you in a second, is a little bit of an expansion of that scope just to help improve the general street appeal of the, of the building and better fit contextually with the, with the surrounding environment. And then finally, there are a few very minor entry improvements to be made to the, the entry area of the property as well. So those are all, all the areas we're looking to formalize here. Just to give you a sense of the facade entry, painting and elevations, we have worked with ACTU Architects to ensure that we're doing this in a way that matches other contemporary projects along, along the lines of the building that we, we have here and the tenant base that we're trying to attract. We have two options here on, in front of you. For the accent color, it seems that it's an important element to highlight because it really accentuates the entry of the building. We are glad to, we're, we're open to your feedback if these two color choices are not in line with your suggestions. Where we felt that both are in line with other examples around the Burlington area. And so we're not breaking context here. And in terms of precedent, just the existing conditions, as you can see here, the, the loading docks with that white paint kind of pop out in the sun specifically. And in terms of precedent for the facade painting, there are a couple of buildings in Burlington here, 99 South Bedford, that have actually undergone a similar facade painting project. And it really just rejuvenates the entire look and feel of the building in a way that would be much more expensive if we were to replace the full facade. And then 77 Row Street, Newton, Massachusetts also went through this process recently. And it's actually the exact same facade material. So this is one that it's gonna, it's gonna look very similar to what you're seeing here. So with that, that's the conclusion of our presentation today. Glad to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you. Steph?
Sure. So I, we did a special permit on this a while ago and I did ask, because it's in the town center, I did ask that they formalize all the exterior modifications on a minor engineering change, which they, which they've done and they've redlined it. As far as what we need to do tonight, again, I think that is kind of where we are in the process. You know, you know, do you feel agree, I mean, the, the crosswalk, we're getting crosswalk, sidewalk, fencing. What we're here to do is really look at the town center design overlay and, and kind of make a determination about that. And is this, does this satisfy that given the context of what you're working in the field?
Got it. So I have the, the lighting that is over by the self-storage. Is that the same as this or is that gooseneck?
This is, so the lighting, this is the, the lighting that will be, the street lighting?
Right, but it doesn't, in front of the self-storage place, right?
So for?
In front of that self-storage facility, what kind of lighting are they using? Because I mean, if they have gooseneck and they're using that, that's going to look tacky.
So they, this is, these, these lights are going along the side of the road.
Sidewalk.
Along the sidewalk. The gooseneck lighting is usually used for signage?
No, no, I understand, but I think that, well, I mean, if you look at like Mall, maybe it's not like Mall Road. We have that. Those are different, right? So they kind of like tilt over. So they kind of like tilt over.
Yes.
What, I'm just asking.
This is the standard, this is the town center.
That's what we're using for town.
This is what we're using for town center. I think this is the exact thing that they're using across the street at Northern Business Machine.
Should be.
Or it's the exact same thing that they're using at the?
Can we just kind of take a look at it, because it's gonna look weird if they're using one thing on one side and Larry's?
No, this is, this is it.
That's what we're using.
Okay. But this is, this is it. This is town center lighting, yep.
I don't necessarily love the blue or the yellow. I think that, you know, when you have a new tenant coming in, they're gonna want their own branding and their own color, so they're gonna go in front of, you know, DBA or whatever to get their own signage, and that might not be conforming, and then if we say, okay, it has to be blue, and then they turn it to a different color, or they, do they have to come back in front of us again? I mean, what does that look like? I mean, personally, I'd rather see a muted color and something more simplistic.
For sure. So what we're hoping to do is actually complete these facade improvements prior to having a tenant in hand. I think what we've received feedback-wise from the leasing market is that the building as is is not really in alignment with the vision of many of these more R&amp;D-focused tenants when they're talking about finding a home for their employees. And so we're bringing this new vision to the market as something that will help attract those tenants and take a vacant building and turn it into a really valuable portion of the neighborhood. I can totally understand your thought process around coloration, and we've actually explored some other options where it's actually the same panel, but with more of a muted and actually wood facade type treatment on it.
Or like a mirror texture or something like that. I mean, I think that might be more aligned with an R&amp;D, but, you know, I don't know. Again, I'm not a fan of the blue and yellow, I just think that you're probably gonna end up changing it, so to dictate a color might be difficult, but again, like maybe something mirror or a different texture altogether might work.
Is that something that you would be comfortable with us bringing forward to the building department during the permitting process?
I mean, you're gonna have to come back in front of us anyways once you get a tenant, don't they?
Only if the tenant requires a special permit. So if they get a tenant that, so again, so bigger context, so they, we just withdrew a bunch of special permits at 22 Tariat because they're waiting for, you sure did, because they are, they haven't found a tenant yet, and so when they do find a tenant, if that tenant needs one of these special permits, they will have to come back. If a tenant doesn't need a special permit because what they're doing is allowed by right, then they won't necessarily have to come back to this board.
And if you feel that a reflective surface, you know, a silver or something along those lines, would be something that you're okay proceeding with today, we're glad to take that approach. I think it's one where we need some sort of an accent here, and we need to be able to do this work to attract that tenant in the first place. Should we come back and change it from something that's kind of pre-approved on this front? We're glad to do that.
We try to stay with colonial, I don't think.
I mean.
Yeah, I think the mirror's gonna.
The mirror's probably gonna be a little.
And I don't just go, you know.
We could do, we could do, you know, a brushed aluminum type thing, so it's not actually mirrored, but.
I wanna stay away from modern. I try to stay with colonial. And are we actually exceeding our authority for design?
Fair, but I mean, I think a muted color might be nicer, I think yellow and blue is not gonna be.
I don't know, I don't, what is, what's the trip point?
Is this in the town center overlay?
Yes, this is in the overlay.
It's in the overlay, but is there not a percentage of change that you have to do in order to trigger design review?
I don't know.
I guess we never got, okay.
I'm sure you talked about it, like.
Yeah, we probably never.
It's probably discussion.
You know, to keep, in other words, to keep a guy who's just replacing a door, doing his whole building, that was the kind of thing, I guess we never really codified that.
Yeah. What's your thoughts? I mean, you like a bright yellow or bright blue?
Well, we can shy away from that.
I don't think that that gets a colonial bill either. I mean, and I'm not saying like necessarily a mirror, I just think a different, maybe a different texture.
Yeah, I'm screening up proposing a wood facade.
So it's not actually wood, it's an aluminum panel with a, essentially a treatment to it that makes it appear to be wood. So if you think of, if you think of the Exchange up in just north of the city, their entrances, they kind of present orangish, but it's actually a wood facade overlay veneer.
Bill, can you pull that up, please?
I actually might have a photo of it that I could reference.
It's a hard build, it's a hard building.
I mean, it is a hard building, and I'm not trying to be a typical.
No, I think what, you know, the reference used here in the precedence is on South Bedford Street, which is not town center. So I think what we need to do, if you can direct the applicant to the town center overlay information that we have.
So.
I've seen it, so.
So we've spent a lot of time reviewing it because we're kind of doing our best here with a really tough existing condition.
Are you only marketing R&amp;D?
So we're marketing the property widely to, you know, industrial and office-type users. I think that the demand that we're seeing in the market is primarily from more innovative, clean technology companies primarily, which is a really exciting use that we're really looking forward to bringing to Burlington, but it's one where they really see themselves as pretty forward-thinking and not wanting to be in a building that looks like it's from the 70s and 80s, unfortunately.
Sure, no, I understand.
Is that something that you have, maybe, does the planning department have that rendition?
Yes, we do have a copy of it, yes, yep. It's also available on our website as well for anybody, and the public is interested.
Okay, that'd be interesting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Which cable are you gonna pull it up?
So what was it again? Was it the Exchange?
Yeah, if I'm gonna just stop presenting for a second while I pull it up.
Sure.
I'm gonna use this someplace sometime.
So, yeah, South Bedford, with the RJ Kelly?
No, the other one, the aluminum, we're looking.
Oh, that's up at the, I think, in Bedford at the Exchange. It's up middle, is that up Middlesex Turnpike? One of the newer buildings or updated facade, it's up on Middlesex Turnpike.
Yeah. All right, give me one second, Google Earth, it's an amazing tool, but it.
Takes a while.
It does. Apologies. All right, is it all right if I share my screen again?
Are you ready?
I think so, yeah. So this is, you'll probably be familiar with this, you can see it from the highway. This is the iRobot building, and this facade condition is exactly, essentially the material that we're talking about. It's actually a metal panel.
Darker one, not the lighter one?
It's actually just, it's just the light, how the light plays on it, it's all the same material. But if you were to, if you were to walk up to the building, this is probably a little bit more orangey in tone, we're talking a little bit more rich darker browns, but if you were to look at the material itself, it's one where it actually is kind of a veneer, a wood veneer feel to it.
Not bad.
Which feels a little bit more like it's consistent with natural tones, so.
Okay. Someone else?
One more comment, Madam Chair, just as I look at the entry improvements, you note that the entry improvements were to strengthen KPO and elevate the existing industrial architecture. I think that's, again, in conflict with what we were thinking, you know, with the more colonial style there, I just don't have a, I'd have to probably search around a little bit and give you a good example, if you, maybe it's up at the Exchange, maybe it's down somewhere else that we could give you examples of what that might be versus an industrial look to give it more of a, certainly a contrasting look, but more in line with the town center, maybe even look across the street at the self-storage for ideas there as well.
So, I mean, I think if we still want to kind of dig a little deeper and give them examples, do we want to continue this to Augusturne?
So just so that I'm understanding, you know, from a use perspective, we're looking at pretty dramatically different uses between self-storage and an active, you know, vibrant business location. And so I think this is, you know, we've brought on our architect, we're really trying here to make sure that the improvements that we're bringing to this area are in line with the overlay district and the town center overlay, and we've gone to pretty great lengths with the landscaping adjustments, the lighting here. We're at a pretty critical point where we feel the need to make these changes and invest some pretty significant dollars into this presentation because it aligns with the needs of the town to fill the building and our needs as well. So I think, you know, we're very open to feedback, but I think it gets pretty challenging if we're designing, trying to put an industrial building into a colonial context, I think that just doesn't really work, and I think that may end up making it feel that much more compromised, rather than being honest with the fact that, yes, it was designed and placed in a different time, but it's, you know, still a valuable part of the town center.
Yeah, we're challenged with the auto parts store right in the center of town, too, and you see we're putting some lipstick on that, and we understand, yeah, for sure.
And the use that you're looking for, especially considering the amount of special permits that you pulled, those aren't, those aren't just that, they're special permits, because this is not what we're looking for, what we're originally looking for in the town center overlay, so we're trying to, you know, to work with you. I mean, I like that a heck of a lot better than the blue and the yellow.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think to Bill's point, if he wants to do some more research, I mean, you can always put a rendering, and you can always put exactly, you know, kind of what you want on your marketing, you know.
Yeah, I think.
In your listing, because you could have a tenant that comes in, says, I like this building, I like this location, and, you know, I'm still gonna have to come in for a special permit, and you're gonna have to come back to us anyways.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that.
We're not trying to beat you up, and we're not trying to, you know, kick the can down the road again, but.
Is this a situation where you guys would be comfortable with proceeding with the items that are more commemorating the conditions of the special permit, and we return on the facade treatment? Because I think if we're just talking about the framing of the entryway, that's definitely something that we can undertake and continue to another meeting, but if we're able to formalize the other items, the conversation just gets that much easier.
Ten minutes.
And I'm not trying to draw this out, I have all.
No, no, I mean, we're friends, we're gonna get this out somehow.
We'll get this.
You know, but it's just a matter of, you know, we want to make sure that, again, because it's the town center overlay, this is not a use that we want, that we originally wanted, and we're gonna have to come back for special permits, most likely, if you vote R&amp;D, we want to make sure we're doing this right.
Totally agree.
Any thoughts, members?
And I'd like to hear from the neighbors as well.
Do we have anyone, oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? If you could please approach, gentlemen, if you would mind, just.
Is this a public hearing? Is this one?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it is, it's not a minor engineering, it's not a.
It is a minor engineering, it's not a public hearing, but I still would like to hear from the neighbors.
I appreciate it. Hi, excuse me.
Thank you. Hi, Kathy O'Neil, 31 Arthur Woods Ave, thank you very much for letting me speak. First of all, one of my thoughts is that there's only four members here tonight. I think it's more than a minor engineering change because of the location, being in the town center and being in the overlay district. I know, for example, Joanne Pember has been extremely involved from way back when, he's not here tonight, Barbara LaRue, and you're all competent, I get that, I trust all of you, but I just think this is such an important issue to the neighbors and to that neighborhood, and I think you're all aware that we've had a number of issues with the owners of those buildings down there, not really doing what they said they were going to do, and doing things that they shouldn't have done. For example, you talked about the lights, Brenda, the lights in front of the storage building, awesome, they did a great job, but the one light that they put on the corner is not nearly as tall as those other lights. So those are some of the things that I think, that's important, like, it does make a huge difference, the style is slightly different as well. Also, it is the downtown overlay, I understand they purchased this property, they want to get a tenant, I understand, but there are guidelines, and the neighbors in that area want to be sure that they're followed. We've had problems, we've discussed a number of them, because the people who were in those buildings didn't do what they were supposed to be doing, and caused an awful lot of problems for residents in that neighborhood. Anyway, I would like to know, I didn't quite understand what the exterior of the building, what color they're talking about painting that, is the exterior gonna be black, is it gonna stay the same? I know they're talking about accents, but I, based on what I saw, I didn't know. And again, I think this is something that should be, it doesn't have to be done tonight, why make?
You can go to that.
Yeah, why make mistakes, and they have to backtrack while live with them. So I was concerned about the color of the building, the color of the loading docks, I didn't quite get what that is. I don't know if this is a question for tonight, but where are the dumpsters going to go? Is that a discussion for another day? How does that work?
Shouldn't have that on the original site.
That was on the original site plan.
They're staying in the same location?
Right in front of the building?
No. There's a lot of area behind the building, we have a ton of parking at this site, which is one of the great flexibilities that we have on the site. I think there are a lot of areas that you could raise concern-wise here, and we totally respect that. We've tried to operate as responsible owners, we have a vacant building on our hands, and we are, you know, maintaining it as if we had a tenant. And I think, you know, we haven't, we haven't acted in a way that I think betrays the trust of the neighborhood here, and the reason the improvements haven't been in place is exactly, the locations need to be formalized, so that's why we're here today.
Another question I had was.
May I add something, Madam Chair? So whoever the person that was just talking to the public, you referenced that, the property owner, and I don't know if you mean this particular property owner.
I don't think that we need to reference other property owners that are unrelated, I think that that's not the type of property it is.
I mean, my point is that they have not committed violations, press, they haven't done anything that.
And I understand that Attorney Hung, but we haven't got there yet, so if you could just let her finish, and then we'll chime in, and then I'd be happy to give you the floor.
The other question I have is regarding the fence. I don't know why we even need a fence, NBM across the street, and if they wanted to look at an example of a building that looks pretty good, it's right across the street from them. NBM, they don't have a big fence there, we, you know, a fence, what is that gonna do? It's not a high-crime neighborhood, I don't understand the purpose of a fence, it just is another eyesore for the buffer zone going into the residential neighborhood.
I think that's.
It was discussed at a previous.
That was discussed at previous meetings on more than one occasion, the fencing, and I don't think the fence is necessarily an eyesore, especially if it's wrought iron, it's bringing that more colonial feel, and I think it's protection both for the tenant and the tenant's property, because, and it goes both ways, you know, somebody's walking their dog, now their dog is going onto their property, do they want to take care of somebody's dog? I mean, you might not have a dog, but somebody else, you know? So I think it goes both ways, you know, there's, as in any relationship, there's give and take.
Yes.
You know, to Attorney Hung's point, there is, we don't need to bring up other people, we know the trials and tribulations that the neighborhood has endured based upon other neighbors or abutters, I should say. So, you know, again, that's a separate issue. I do think that, and we've said this kind of in the midst of our discussions, that we should probably, you know, table this until we have a different, you know, we have a full board, because this has been a long discussion, and did we say, is this still considered a special permit, or is this not?
No, no, no.
No, this is a minor.
This is minor. This is, yeah, it's a minor engineering change because they are not adding additional square footage to the building.
And can I just add that I think some of these items are actually considered insignificant engineering changes, but due to the special permit, they were pushed into the minor engineering change section, so that's, that's.
That being said, we still need to get an approval, so if the board doesn't feel comfortable getting an approval this evening, whether or not it's a minor engineering change, a special permit, if we need to table it until, you know, the following, the following meeting, I think that's what we're here to do. Is there anyone? Please wait a moment. Is there anyone on the board that has anything that they wanted to add? List?
Would it make, would it be helpful to you for next time to have the applicant provide additional facade options? I know that the colors were difficult, but I think if we, the render, I think it wasn't provide, but the rendering with, with that wood accent or other, other types of accents, would that be helpful to you guys in, in making a decision based upon this conversation? So is, what, what's the, what do you think is the next things that would be helpful for you guys from the tenant or from the property owner's perspective that would be helpful going forward?
Okay, so I, I like the wood look. I mean, I would like to see a, a better rendering than that.
We can bring in a sample if you'd like.
That would be great. You know, as far as Bill had made mention of-
I think, I think the, the entrance, you've made the entrance, I think you even noted you made that to be, to prove that and elevate the existing industrial architecture. I think we wanna see if we can do something to that entrance, maybe, there might be some examples we can show you either in the overlay district itself or other places we can help you there. To get something a bit more, yeah, to kind of make that more within the overlay district, but still, you know, to, to keep a first-class building. You know, because you're in, you're in kind of a difficult spot there, but we've done it before, so.
Are those examples that can be shared before the next meeting?
Absolutely, and that's our goal, is that, you know, we can, based upon what we've been presented, is that, you know, we're gonna do, you know, our due diligence on our end, present it to you through staff, and then, you know, we can have that next conversation and the, the entire board can be here. Attorney Hung, I, I did say that you could speak if you have something additional to add.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Would it please the board if, because some of the conditions with respect to the fencing and the lighting were approved by planning staff, they were conditions in the special permit, that we approve those changes as part of the minor engineering and then save the exterior kind of building facade and that be continued so that at least we can have approval on those changes that have been set for, those conditions in the special permit have been approved by planning staff where appropriate so that they can move forward on at least proceeding on those enhancements and then just leave the matter, the issue in question, which is the building facade, to the next, to continue that to the next planning board hearing? I don't-
Go ahead. I don't, I, I like, I'm totally, I understand where you're coming from. I don't know how from a staff perspective, I mean, we have provided the board with a copy of the decision that they would be voting on. Because we're changing that, I don't have anything for them to really vote on at this point to do that. So administratively, I don't know how we'd be able to do that at this point, but I understand, I understand the desire.
I don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, four of us who are here, I don't think have any issues with the fencing. And again, please chime in if somebody feels differently. I think, you know, we're, one of the abutters had noted that there was a difference in lighting. And why would there be a difference in lighting? I, I just kinda wanna dig deeper on that.
I don't, I was unaware, I mean, so the town center overlay district, the design rules and regs-
Right.
-do not have a standard lighting. They say colonial.
Got it.
So the lighting on the common is different, it's, it's colonial, but it's different than the lighting that you see at the bank, which is different than the lighting you see at the self-storage facility.
Right, no, and I understand that. I think it's just, you know, where we're looking at, and obviously a self-storage is very different than an RD or an office, and I understand that as well. I think I just wanna see how different that lighting is. I mean, if we're looking at a small, a big land. Again, it's a town center overlay. We're trying to rejuvenate it, make it more of a, you know, enticing area where we're going to retain more business, not just big businesses, but small businesses as well. So I think, you know, I, I would feel more comfortable if we continue this to August 3rd.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry for jumping in. I'm Kevin McCall. You've seen me before. I'm the CEO of Pareline Properties. I was hoping to be a spectator tonight. And I would just make an appeal similar to what Counselor Hung has, has made. If there's a technical, mechanical way to do this, we need to get, we need your help. We need to get going on the improvements to this property so that we can attract a tenant. And we've been going through the process, the, the fencing was actually a requirement of the board at a prior meeting. And so on that matter, and the lighting was a requirement of the board, and we've tried to match the lighting and work with planning staff to make sure that what we're, what we're intending to put in there is consistent with the intent of the board. You know, tonight, I'd really love to see if, we need to paint this building. We need to make it look more attractive to companies that wanna come and occupy the building and build their business here. We, you know, it's been quite a while and we really, we need some help. I'm just making that appeal to you. We don't wanna, we don't wanna do anything that's contrary to the, to the wishes of the board and we're trying to work with the, the staff and the board to come up with a plan that is acceptable to everybody, but we, we need your help.
And I understand that and I think that, you know, we're trying to help you and we're trying to obviously, you know, look out for the best interest of the community and the abutters and, and for everyone involved. I don't think two weeks is going to kill us as far as your marketability. You know, you can always put a rendering in in your marketing package if this is what we intend for it to look like, you know, subject to, you know. I'm gonna respectfully say this, you don't wanna contradict what the planning board wants, but the planning board, you're hearing, you know, the board saying that we wanna continue this to August 3rd. So again, I wanna work with you and I'm trying to be respectful of that, but I also have members who are here who have been heavily involved. And unfortunately, you know, we're having this, a special meeting on August 3rd to get more, you know, more done because of, you know, our schedule, so.
To that end, if we can just be clear with staff as to what the process will be to get to the next meeting and, and how we can come back to you with something that we think will be satisfactory to the board.
Sure, so, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, sir.
Noah.
Noah. So Noah had said he was going to be, bringing in, you know, a sample of the facade or a sample facade.
A virtual.
Right, but he can bring that into staff.
Oh, okay.
We don't have to come in anyways to sign paperwork, so that, that doesn't make a difference. Bill had mentioned that he was gonna do some homework as far as, you know, what he would like to see. I would like to see what the difference is in that lighting, whatever specs you can get. I mean, if it's not, if it's not firm enough, fine, but I don't wanna approve something without doing my homework. I, I think that that would, you know, it's not in the best interest of the community.
Can I ask a quick question? When it comes to samples, would it be helpful to have, we can bring a, or provide a sample of the actual facade in different paint styles so that you can see what that paint will actually look like on the material?
I mean, whatever you plan on putting on that building is probably a good idea, you know, whether you do like some type of palette or disabled or, you know, would it, the more you give us, the easier our job is gonna be.
Sure, absolutely.
So with that being said, does anyone else have anything that they wanna address before the next meeting?
Madam Chair, I just encourage, encourage the applicant again to re, relook at that overlay district and kind of look at versus what you're seeing outside Bedford Street and, and try to look at what we're already trying to do downtown, look across the street. I know it's, what my intention was not to say of self-storage versus a, an RD facility, but the actual architecture itself, the colors, that type of thing, I encourage you to do. And then, you know, because we've spent a lot of time on that with other applicants and not just in one meeting, but it's been, I can tell you, we've spent with some applicants many, many meetings and we certainly wanna work with you as quickly as we can. Renderings and materials is exactly what we expect.
Do you think it would be helpful, Madam Chair, to schedule a site walk?
I mean, we can have a site walk if you apply.
I mean, like, would it, do you think it would help the board?
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna drive down there anyways.
I am too, because I'm really not up to speed with-
And I don't know that we need to formalize a site walk. I think that, you know, we all live, we all live in town, so I think we're, but thank you, I appreciate that. Bill, when do you think that you can get your ideas to staff?
Early next week.
Okay, so can we say Tuesday, Wednesday? Tuesday of next week, okay. I will do my homework by Tuesday of next week. Can you agree to do a site walk?
Yes.
Personal site walk before Tuesday.
Yes, I'll do this weekend, yes.
Can you please send out an email to the board stating the same, that if there's anything that they would like to do, if they could please review this meeting and notes prior to Tuesday and provide feedback prior to Tuesday, that would be helpful. Okay, so that way, if we have, if everybody gets everything to her by Tuesday, hopefully you'll have it by Wednesday, you'll have plenty of time to, you know, to do what you need to do on your end. And in the interim, you know what you, you know, what you need to do as far as providing samples, a color palette, and you can get that to staff as soon as, you know, as soon as you're able, we can come in and, because we're, we're all gonna be trickling in at different points in time over the next two weeks.
Great.
Sounds fine.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue to the next planning board meeting of August 3rd, 2023. Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, thank you. Notice of appointment. Item A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.2, oh, excuse me, 4.2.6.20.1. Massage therapy, we're on page eight folks. Massage therapy of the zoning bylaws, 154 Cambridge Street, Ease and Grace Massage is the applicant.
Just a little bit of context ahead of time, so this, it's, two women are looking to lease space in the My Salon Suites, which is a new tenant space over at the shops at Simmons Park. And basically, the, the business model is that they provide salon spaces for people who are, who are doing personal services such as hair, massage, that type of thing. So if, you know, if you're at a larger, a larger kind of hair salon and you wanna break out onto your own, this is like a step, first step to getting your own space. And so these two women have, have come to us to, to start their own in that, in that, in that ease, in that space. So with that, I'm gonna, for you, Madam Chair, that's all kind of all I have.
Thank you, please state your name.
Gina Belmonte, I'm the owner of Ease and Grace Massage. I'm, I've been a massage therapist for 10 years. The woman that is going in with me, she has her own independent LLC. She's on call, she's unfortunately unable to be in. We've been providing massage therapy, both of us together, you know, again, roughly about 10, roughly about 10 years. And I've been living in Burlington for five. My father-in-law actually co-owns a whole bunch Flower Market, so he's pretty familiar with the town. I'd like to make my way into that. And as you'd said, it's pretty straightforward. We're just hoping to branch out and start our own thing and give back to the community independently.
Great. So just, you know, this is a special permit, so, you know, we can't approve this tonight because we only have four members.
I do understand.
You've already mentioned you're a former business, that's wonderful. Staff, there's no complaints on either applicant's license or LLC?
Nope, and we've been provided copies of their licenses as well.
Great. Does anyone have any questions or comments or? Chair.
Just which building, which part of the building is it?
So if you'd have to nudge to the right side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, see, it's, it's right next to Cambridge Savings.
Got it, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Thank you, sorry, go, Bill. Thank you, Andy, thank you, Madam Chair. So, did My Salon come before us or are they coming before us on each time?
So the rest of the, of the tenant space in there is by right uses as far as the, the hairdresser and all that, so they don't need to come before you guys for any permits, but the massage therapy does, so that's why.
Then would you have, I just, I didn't see the, what the interior of that looks like, but is there a, is there a rendering of that?
Yes, there is. This is what, this is what was submitted with, kind of how the room would look itself.
Okay.
So I think, Bill, I don't know if you're kind of familiar with this business concept, there's something similar right across your market basket over, but I'm gonna date myself and say the old Calmore Mall. So they have these interior units and, you know, and then, you know, you can either, you can either, you know, have them joined or subdivide them and whatnot. So I mean, it's, it's a pretty great concept for somebody who's starting out and doesn't wanna have all the overhead. And each of the units are secure and, you know, it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Well, we look forward to seeing you next week, or I'm sorry, in two weeks.
Sounds good.
Is there anyone in the audience has any questions, comments at this point in time? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, motion made to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August 3rd, 2023. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? For the hour, have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section, section 3.6, fast order food establishments of the, of the 90 Middle Six Turnpike Plan Development zoning provisions. 90 Middle Six Turnpike is the property, yes, chicken is the applicant. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Well, how are you?
I just got my blueprints today-
Okay.
-for the space this morning, so I didn't have time-
Could you pull that microphone a little closer to you?
A little closer to the microphone.
So I just got the blueprints today, this morning, and I didn't have time to forward to the city hall.
All right, so why don't we do this? We will continue to August 3rd.
Okay.
Then you can come in, you can tell us everything and give us the whole layout and we'll be good. We're excited. I like chicken.
Awesome.
Do you wanna tell us a little bit about your concept, though?
Oh, yeah, so, so basically, what my, my concept is that we're actually a fried chicken place, but the difference between our fried chicken place and places like Chick-fil-A or other places is we try to give as much as possible for the price that we, you know, for cost to profit ratio. But not only that, but we try to give as much quality, like a fine dining experience of food items into the fast food space. So one of our items are the trouble fries. And if you go into any fine dining restaurant, they charge you like 13 to 15 dollars for the fries. And at our place, it's like six bucks, you know? And then we have other appetizer items such as like yozas, tenders, mac and cheese and stuff like that.
Is this, do you have like a, is it a server or is it self-service? Like, is it, you count, like, how?
What it is is, it's just like the way Chick-fil-A does it, where you come up to the counter, you order, and then we give, put it in a bag and then give it to you guys. And then we have seating inside the space. So right now we have about 20 seatings inside the space and you can eat inside the space or you can take it home. And then we have somebody just come and clean up your space afterwards.
I look forward to seeing those blueprints. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time?
Your chicken look good.
Yes, yes, it does.
Chicken and trouble fries, I'm in trouble. Staff, do you have any comments that you'd like to make at this time?
I don't, the only thing, just for the record, that this is in the former Cordoba site and they are not proposing any additional seating beyond what was previously approved.
Great. Both interior and exterior?
Correct, yep.
Cool, yep. Should be pretty easy and straightforward. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, motion to continue this magistrate planning board meeting of August 3rd, 2023. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, one more question for you.
Oh, we have one in Lawrence and Lynn right now.
Lawrence and Lynn, got it.
Great, the other one's like.
I'll wait till Burlington comes around.
Lawrence and Lynn.
Lynn.
Oh, Lynn, oh, good.
Item C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.6.10, restaurants of the zoning bylaws, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, AKA mom. Fiorella's Burlington LLC doing businesses, Fiorella's Cucina is the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, again, for the record, attorney Mark Juan with Reema Bronstein here, tonight representing the petitioner. With me is Ramon Carrion, who is the principal of Fiorella's Restaurant Group, that is very excited about the opportunity to locate a new restaurant concept here in Burlington. So, this is a very straightforward application, Madam Chair and board members, in that they are looking to simply occupy the same space that has most recently been occupied by Parm Restaurant at the Burlington Mall, so I think you're familiar with that space, obviously, at the corner. The seat count is not changing, the menu will be Italian-inspired fare, similar to what Parm had, not that the menu triggers the, the special permit review, but as you know, under the, your, your special permit requirements, it's specific to the operator, and therefore, since it's a new company, new operator, then we had to file for a new special permit. But, just a little bit about Fiorella's, they've been in Massachusetts for a number of years, they opened their first location in Newtonville in 2000, and have locations in Concord, Belmont, Brighton, Wellesley, and Lexington. I know it has a tremendous reputation, hopefully, some of you have dined there before, or know some that have, but they really, they, they do well, and I think they're gonna have a successful location here. So, I know Ramon and his team are very excited about the opportunity to locate here, and we understand, of course, with only four board members tonight, you can't act on this, but certainly, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them before the matters continue to August 3. And I think, Ramon, you wanted to just say something about your business?
Yeah, thank you, like I said, my name is Ramon Carrion, I've been in Newton for 23 years now, so it's amazing how time flies, but I live locally, live in Lexington, I grew up in this area, so we have strong roots, my dad started a place in Belmont originally, where I grew up, you know, making pizzas when I was 13 years old, so, you know, really excited when we've, you know, came across this opportunity, you know, it's gonna be all cosmetic, just kind of giving it that Fiorella's feel and brand, and that warmth and a little charm that, you know, people come to know and, and love from us, and it's a little more classic Italian, I think it's just, you know, I think with the, with, from my understanding, what people want, you know, from that experience, so, yeah, it's, it's really a great opportunity, we're really excited, so, I don't know if there's any other questions that I can answer?
No, but I'm hungry, between chicken and trouble fries.
Yeah, exactly.
You guys are killing me.
How soon do you think you'd be open, if it got approved?
We're, we're, we're trying to expedite the process, because again, it's, it's pretty quick and seamless to transfer the space, November 1 would be ideal, but if it's a very small window, and if that doesn't work, then we're gonna, yeah, which is because of the holidays coming up, and trying to staff and train everybody, so, yeah, it's, it's a bit challenging, but we're definitely up for the occasion, so, yeah, looking forward to it.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, that they'd like to make right now?
There's two patios, as you can see there, the cosmetic upgrades, obviously, in, to the inside, we'd be putting new signage up and whatnot, the, the existing patios have these retractable awnings that are there, you may have seen a photo of them.
Sure.
Ramon felt that what would be better architecturally complimented, it would be more stationary awning, so we can certainly provide that to, to staff, but I don't know if that triggers an insignificant change or not, but to me, it's still awnings there, but I think it will certainly complement.
Let's take a look at a rendering, or if we have something similar at a different facility, I'd like to see them.
Yeah, so I think we can probably handle that, as an insignificant change, we can talk about it offline, Mark, but I, I mean, I'll look at it, I mean, we can.
If we'd be without, you know, lettering on it or anything?
I mean, I'm pretty su, I'm sure that when the, the original special permit that was submitted probably already has that documented.
Okay, thank you, if we do, if we do have lettering on it, certainly we would need to get CBA approval.
Yes.
So, I mean, yeah, it's all that.
Yeah, thank you.
Can't do it unless the CBA.
Sure, sure, okay. That being said, you have a motion?
Sure, Madam Chair, continue this matter to the planning board meeting of August 3, 2023.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For the hour, we will see you August 3.
Thank you.
Good evening. Item D is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.3.1.14G wireless communication facilities, which are subject to section 4.0, which will be permitted in the communications overlay district in accordance with the map depicting the districts and the provisions of section 1.0 of the zoning bylaws, zoning bylaws 32, uh, 328 to 330 Cambridge Street, Dish Wireless LLC is the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Edward Pare, it's P-A-R-E, I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, here this eve, One Financial Center in Boston, Massachusetts, here this evening representing Dish Wireless. So, SBA is a tower owner, it's the unipole that's behind the Department of Children and Families at 328 Cambridge, here we go.
We're keeping up the elevation?
Yep.
Do you actually have a picture of the site plan?
Yep, getting that right now.
Thank you.
Do you have one of these?
Yeah, I'm gonna dig into this a lot deeper, I just got this tonight, so. Oh, I know, it's my favorite.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Ready? So, at the left is the elevation depiction of the tower, the tower is currently 120 feet above ground level, it's occupied by four carriers, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, and MetroPCS. Dish and, Dish Wireless is a, a new wireless entry into the market, they were created based on the merger of T-Mobile and Sprint, so they became the fourth competitor in the market. The, so they're looking to extend, add a 10-foot extension to the top of the tower, the tower isn't within the wireless overlay district, of course. The zoning board of appeals had granted a variance for height to 120 feet, but pursuant to the Spectrum Act, under federal law, we're allowed to extend the tower by an additional 20 feet, in this case, Dish is only proposing to up an additional 10 feet. The installation will be similar to what's there, there'll be three antennas within the unipole, there'll be a shroud outside the antennas, fortunately, if you can go to the plan view, there's existing, there's existing space within the fence compound, Dish will locate its equipment cabinet on an existing steel frame, we'll also be installing an H-frame, which you see on the right-hand side here, for the electric meter and the associated radio equipment. As part of the packet, we do show that we comply with the FCC, thank you. So just to give a brief summary here, so, the, the middle of the site plan on the left is where the tower is located, the double circle there, and then Dish will locate on that existing steel platform, just to the south of that. The equipment, this is a typical wireless installation, which I'm sure the board is familiar with, the equipment has cables that run from the equipment inside the pole up to the antennas, so you see the ice bridge, which connects to the, to the tower, and then further south is the H-frame that I talked about. We did provide a radio frequency emissions study, which shows that we're 1.3-something percent of the maximum, pretty, pretty straightforward application, it's the sole purpose of the pole, to allow for co-location, and that's what Dish is proposing to do, I'd be happy to answer any questions or specifics.
Okay, so we said, um, thank you, sorry.
You're welcome.
So you said Verizon, AT&amp;T, Metro, who was the fourth carrier?
T-Mobile.
And then you're adding Dish, are you steffing this equipment, did you say?
Are we what?
Are you steffing this equipment?
Well, the antennas, yes, they'll be inside a canister, just as the others are.
Okay, so, do we have a passing structural?
You do.
Do you put it in here?
I think it's available.
It should be in your packet.
Well, I mean, it was available online and was sent out, it was.
Got it, okay.
It's on our, our website.
Okay, but we, I'm sure staff has already stated to you that this, because it's a special permit, we only have four people.
Honestly, yeah, I was advised, I get it.
So, now here, I want to take a, a little bit of a deeper dive.
But if there are questions that anybody has, we can deal with it, or if there are, you know, information I need to get before, over the next two weeks, we'll do so.
Oh, absolutely, is there a gas generator on site?
There's no, uh, yeah, there may be by other carriers, but not, but it's not proposed by Dish.
To find out by, from SBA, I'd appreciate that.
I'll, I'll give it a go.
Thank you, if you could also ask SBA if they would replace that god-awful, ugly, ugly-looking fence?
The god-awful what?
I mean, the fence. I mean, that's probably older than I am, that would be very nice of them.
I'll make the request at the appropriate party.
Please. I want to take a look at the structural, is the RF study also online?
It should be, it should be up on our website, too.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else, so, actually, there is one other thing, any unused equipment?
Yeah, we've asked SBA, we don't think so, all of the leases are still in place, and we did our emission study with, with all four carriers, but we're used to seeing a condition as such, and the bylaw requires it, so if, you know, if there is, then.
You could have the site manager do a sightwalk, and I'd be happy to meet them there if they would like to.
What was that?
Site manager for SBA, if you could have him meet at the property, I'd be happy to meet him and do a sightwalk with him.
I'll make the request.
And then also, do you have a removable bond in your lease?
I'm sorry, what was that?
A removal bond in the lease?
A removable?
Removal bond.
I don't know, because we are.
Take it away.
We're not the tower owner, so I, I want to assume so, if they pulled the building permit, they should have posted.
If you could stop, if you could take a look at that, I'm sure Town Council has as well, but I want to make sure that that's also included in there. So this isn't a town, this isn't a town, I know, but, I mean, at least if, while we have them there, it might be good just to, while we have that open light of communication to say, hey, by the way, is your removal bond updated, is it even in place? Kind of a check's about.
And I'll certainly ask, I'll ask SBA also, obviously.
That would be great, thank you. I don't think I have anything else, but again, I want to do a deeper dive into some of these things. If you could just hold off one moment, please, is there anyone on the board that has any questions, comments, or concerns? No.
I'll just make a comment, Madam Chair. I, I actually was on the Board of Appeals when, when this was approved for the height, I think had we known that you could go up an additional 20, we probably would have backed it off 20 feet, knowing that that was, was requirement, and maybe just to staff as a town suggestion, when these, they come in before, just to note, if there's, I know we had that, we had consultants in on the wireless, but if, if there's a guideline for that, just maybe noted in that allows for 20 feet above where it is. I know there was, after the fact, we learned that there, there was a possible resident that was closer to where it was allowed in the building that was just renovated on 3A, I think that was unknown at the time, or, but is there any residents living in the renovated building now, or is that just an office building, do you know?
The building that's on 3A, I believe that there are, that there are apartments in there.
Yeah, so I, I know that where this was, it was, it was inside of where, if there were residents there, then that wouldn't, that wouldn't be allowed, so I don't know what happens if now there are residents there, is there an issue of going up additional 10 feet?
That's actually, I'd like to ask, I think that's a good point, another question for Town Council.
I think, I think, if I recall, now this was, I've been on this board for about 10 years, but the source was one that, but just my recollection is.
Yeah, the, the decision does require, and the bylaw requires that pole be 200 feet from the closest residence, or the height of the tower, whichever is greater, so a building permit was pulled, it's gotta be 200 feet from whatever that building was, the height's not gonna make a difference in the setback, you'll still comply.
If, if, I think of radiation, we're, we're adding to it, right? Are we adding, we're adding another service to it?
Well, we are adding another service, but I think that, I mean, the fall zone changes by another 20 feet, so if we don't have, I mean, if we were at 150 feet, your fall zone is such, you know, at a, a smaller circumference of the area, as opposed to if you're increasing it, now your fall zone has changed, so does that change because of the location, so while, you know, if the pole still stands, if we're 20 feet away, now you've added, you know, extra height on it, if that goes down, that's closer to.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Further.
What I'm saying is, we had to be, SBA had to be 200 feet away from the building, so the height, it's the greater of, so.
I guess my point is, is that if, if, at the time, that building was not determined to have a resident. We kind of heard after the fact, they say, hey, did we think there's someone living in there?
I'd suggest you talk to the Town Council and.
You know, and, and, these are, you know, we, just like SBA does, there are due diligence and Dish does as well, that's what we're here for, so.
Yep.
All right, so we definitely have some questions and some research that we want to do on our end, as you know, with the special permit, there's only four of us here, so we can't.
Understood.
Anyways, we do have two residents here that, I assume you're residents, folks? Did you have something you wanted to say, ma'am?
Yes. Name is Evelyn Truvette, I live at 2 Alma Road.
2 Alma?
We were here once before regarding the same monopole. At that point in time, several years ago, when the monopole was first discussed at the planning board, at that point in time, most of the neighborhood was here, and the neighborhood was very much against it, and it went through, because the zoning was the way it was, and it still is. However, the piece of property that that monopole is on, first of all, is pretty close to the wetlands, that start partway down on Alma Road, in the back, some people's properties. We were concerned at that time about the RF waves, and we still are, and there are a lot of children on that street. Okay, there are four providers now, you want to put a fifth in, what's going to happen next year, five years from now, 10 years from now, are we going to have more and more providers on that pole?
I, I see your point, as a bit of a background, I've been in the telecom industry for almost 20 years, and real estate sector of the telecom industry.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said, you know, as a bit of a background in my professional life, I still consult for telecom, real estate contracts, such as, you know, if a landowner owns property or a building owner. In my experience, most of these carriers are merging, I'm surprised that Dish is going on, and I, I would imagine one of these carriers is probably gonna come off, that's not to say it's going to happen. The point of an RF study, the point, at the point of a passing structural, those are things that are supposed to be put in place to ensure that we're all safe. I don't have specific answers for you, but what I can say is that we do want to do a little bit more due diligence on our end, and to ensure that, you know, whatever we're obligated to do, we are doing so for the community, and also by law, what the owner, the landowner is able to use their property for. So, we're, we're gonna do some more research, and we will be back on August 3, and we'd be happy if you, you know, you'd like to virtually attend.
Madam Chair, can I also add that this, this is already, this specific application has already gone in front of the Conservation Commission for this exact submittal, and they have already received approval, so regarding your issues with the wetlands, that that has already been approved.
Okay.
For this permit, for anything related to the wetlands.
Okay, also, if this should go through, is this equipment all going to be inside the monopole?
Yes.
Because there's nothing hanging on the outside, and that's the way the neighborhood wanted it, nothing hanging on the outside.
There shouldn't be anything hanging on the outside, the equipment will be inside, but that's what that fencing is there for, and which is why it looks like it's gonna fall down, and I'd love for a new fence to be put back up, or something that's a lot more pretty, because it looks like it's on its last legs. So we want to ensure everything is enclosed, everything is safe, there's no children going into the, the facility, I'm sure it is locked, we are, we only can do so much, because laws project carriers, and that's kind of where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you for wanting me to speak. I'll see you later.
Can we get a distance between the pole now and that building that was redone on Cambridge Street?
What it's called.
I can, I can, it's a rough estimate.
I don't know, we didn't consider at the time if there was.
Can, can you provide us with that distance?
I don't know that we can provide the distance.
I don't think that they're gonna do that, but I think that we can get it somehow.
You could certainly ask SBA for it, but we can certainly ask also, but.
It's been redone, so I, was it torn down?
I think if, I think if you do it on Google, you'll see it's about 200 feet.
I just, I said a rough one, it's, it's 200 feet from.
Rough estimate, do you have a survey of that property?
Nope.
Yes, I'm sure.
336 Cambridge Street.
336, okay.
They, they did convert that to a park. They did convert that to a park.
This is that off, are you talking about the building with the office on the first floor and there's residences on the?
Yeah, I think so.
It's to the southeast of the pole?
Are you talking?
If you're looking at, if that's north.
No, you're not talking about the DCF site, you're talking about the house on the other side.
To the left.
Yeah.
To north, heading towards the north, but to the southeast of the.
Southeast of the pole.
West of the pole.
I'm sorry, southwest.
You could request a survey from SBA, that'd be helpful.
A what?
The survey.
I'll ask them.
There's a pole there, I go build a house. So you're in the, the pole is already there, right? Yeah, yeah. But I think it was the issue, it was a residence.
I would just remind you, there was a condition that SBA could, or the pole owner could not pull a building permit without it being 200 feet. I mean, that was a condition of getting their building permit, so.
It's a condition, but that doesn't mean somebody measured it.
Yeah, but I don't think anybody considered that because it was not considered resident at the time, which I think it was.
Yeah. News has passed.
Fair, fair. Okay, well, like I said, we have some more homework to do. If you could get those items from SBA.
I'll give it my best.
They want our best, they should give us our best.
We'll see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, make a motion to continue to the planning board meeting of August 3, 2023.
Another one? Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good evening.
Thanks, that's for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wow.
All right, so did everybody, did everybody look at the meeting minutes?
Yes.
Sure, why not?
Madam Chair, motion made to approve the minutes of June 15, 2023.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to be online for a long time on August 3, but at least we'll be.
We sure are. We're just, hey, you know, we got the chair for that.
So that's why I put it in the discussion items, I just want everybody to know that August 3, we're adding an additional meeting to our, to our calendars. It's going to be virtual, it's the summertime, we're going to.
Do we get paid extra?
Yes, you get another dollar.
Yes, you get an extra. So be on the lookout for that, I'll be sending out a meeting preview on that, and hopefully with some of these, we can just get through them. There are some new items that are going to be coming up on that meeting, so I'll be sending you guys notifications of that as well, but I just wanted to remind everybody of that. It's at 6:30 instead of 6. We'll also probably be discussing the amendments going to town meeting as well, so.
If you think, yeah, we're good, I think. So anyone have any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a couple of items to maybe just bring up real quick.
Sure.
What's happening at the Audi site? There's some construction going on there, is that just cosmetic?
That is cosmetic. I think they filed a minor engineering change to, so the Audi site had the original Porsche curved to be a facade, and so they're just making it more in alignment with the brand, and I think that was done through a minor engineering change that was kind of administrative and didn't really do, it was cosmetic.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And just one more, with the Town Center Electronics Center, is there anything going on with that? Have they had any more meetings? Does anybody know? The Burlington Center Electronics Center, I know they were going to do more meetings and they were going to.
No, no meetings.
That was continued.
They pulled it.
No, 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 I mean, there was a subcommittee on it.
Right, as far as I know, the subcommittee has.
No, it's, it hasn't been anything, nothing.
So, but it's not dead, I guess, but they just.
It's not dead, but they pulled it for at least the time.
Yeah, if they want to bring it back to January, they could, but at this time, we, it won't be coming to Jan, it won't be going to the September time.
Since, for the first time we talked about. Okay, that's all I want to know if it was.
Barbara's coming back to help the chair.
We're all going to be here anyways, we're here to support each other.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a motion?
Well, I just have one more thing, and I just wanted to make note of it. And, you know, we had talked about Airbnb's and how we don't like Airbnb's and they're not permitted in Burlington. Can you please ask council where people are renting their pools on the Pool Share website?
Do, what, you're doing what?
Yeah, they're renting their.
They're renting their pools?
Yeah, there's like a website that you can rent your pool.
Jesus, I should have been making some money. Oh, no.
Is that, is, I mean, is that like a sublease of residential property? Is that allowed? Is that, I mean, obviously, that's not something we first saw when.
If they have a stove and a kitchen sink in the pool, then yeah, it's not allowed.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't apply under the zoning, and I think we still have Airbnb's, right? So they're.
They're Airbnb, so it's, again, I've talked to the building inspector, they are, Airbnb's are short-term rentals, we, any company that is promoting short-term rentals are not allowed in town. I don't know where the line is when that comes to pools, but I know that the building inspector is, it's like whack-a-mole with him, and he is, he's actively.
Yeah, but you can go, I know we talked about this earlier, to Airbnb themselves and it's just the town that, the address and they, you are, they're prohibited from posting, so that's, I think for whack-a-mole, it's not the, you have to go up the level to.
I think we have tried, I don't know if that's in their interest.
I think other towns have done it, so.
I thought we already did it, too.
I think the town.
I thought we did it, too.
Town Council.
Also, because it might be just, we're talking to the wrong people.
Sure.
Because you're probably calling the help line or something, somebody.
Somebody who doesn't, yeah.
You know, if I could be making a million dollars.
If we could be making a million dollars off a pool, I mean.
You have to provide bad health.
I think it was two, there are currently two selected on there, maybe even three that were part of that, you know, we put actual zoning in for Airbnb, but, you know, if it's a whack-a-mole, then it's not effective, so I think I can, you know, go up, go up the level. You know, go to your, you know, state senator or rep or, you know, kind of work it that way, but, you know, because I don't think we're the first people to do that, but I think we're the, maybe the only ones that tried and are not successful. Other towns have prohibited. And I mean, if you go to Linfield, you might want to check with them, how they did it, remember they had that big party that ended tragically a couple of years ago?
Sure.
So I'm sure they, that's prohibitive and I think it's probably effective, so.
You can reach out to the planner.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion made to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was waiting for it.
Could you, you guys to sign the A and R for?